All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to our December 7th regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
Roll call. Mr. Alper.
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Mrs. Trick Scales.
Here.
Mrs. Tunncliff.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Notice the meeting. Please take notice. The adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7th and November 24, 2020. That's a notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That's the notice posted in the Lobby Administration Building with the Board of Education.
All right. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of November 16th and 19th?
So moved.
And seconded.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunncliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Student Liaison Report. Ms. Ridley and Ms. Selston, what do you got?
Hi there. So me and Andre just wanted to begin by speaking about some exciting student programs that have taken place over the past, just recently and are developing that we just wanted to share for everyone. Um, so first I was, I was thinking if I, the theater department is participating in a very exciting project called the Enough Plays Project, which is basically, um, you know, nationwide slash worldwide kind of a project where there are a group of playwrights. There's a contest much earlier in the year that a lot of playwrights applied to, and they wrote many plays having to do with, gun violence and presenting that, that present and discuss this issue of gun violence. These plays were put together and published in an anthology and was distributed to schools across the country and across the world in different countries as well. So our theater department is kind of participating in this worldwide project. My play is one of, a play I wrote is also a part of this anthology. And we're all just really excited because we think it's a very kind of exciting opportunity to kind of fuse the arts and student activism. I, we are also, we were thinking of working with Western Youth Caucus in organizing a talk back after the plays to kind of, you know, open better, open up the conversation around, you know, gun violence. And I thought that was very exciting to discuss. Andre?
Hi. Um, so on December 10th, Schools for Girls of Colors Learning Network's Youth Advisory Committee is having an event called Breaking the Narrative: Girls of Color Talk About School Police. School-based police officers are also known as like school resource officers. They've been a growing presence in schools across the country and associated with high surveillance and criminalization, criminalization of students, especially girls of color. So this event is created by Girls of Color for and about Girls of Color and Conversation with School Police. It'll include a panel discussion that'll have some of our student council members attending, break our rooms and shared narratives that explore the unique challenges created by the presence of SROs, the school resource officers in schools and all the concerns about the misconduct in schools and just opinions and options for improving the relationships between the Girls of Color and these police officers in schools.
Um, we also wanted to bring up a poetry out loud, which is a competition that the, a poet, a recitation competition that this school participates in annually. We were very afraid that we'd have to stop participating this year just because of, you know, the recent pandemic. However, uh, the whole competition has been a kind of transition to be completely virtual. And so we will be conducting tryouts and eventually semifinals and finals this year. Um, and I, I thought it was a really great way to kind of maintain some normalcy, you know, you know, as safely as possible throughout these next few months. And we are just all very excited that we're able to continue, um, you know, our, our participation this year.
Uh, in addition to trying to keep a kind of source of normalcy, the band actually created a band concert via Zoom and it's on YouTube, but it's not a public link. So if you'd like it, you can reach out to Mr. Kelly, Ms. Legatick or Mr. Zimmer in regards to this link and ask them about it. If there are any questions with their emails, I believe they're on our West Orange website. And then you can also like email one of us and just ask for it because we, I know it, I'm in their class.
Um, finally, uh, we just wanted to kind of speak about our transition next into this next corner, a next quarter of virtual, um, learning. We would like to thank the board and everyone involved for trying to make this as smooth as a transition as possible. And, you know, to help you do so, uh, you know, me and Andre would just wanted to kind of reemphasize our position as student liaisons. And, you know, uh, you know, we, or like what, kind of like what we do here. We really work to like present the perspective of, you know, students, which we completely understand is a little bit less accessible from, like from adults, I think, having students on the board, having the position of student liaison, something we're tremendously grateful for because a lot of other districts don't have this position. So we definitely are here to kind of impose and present this kind of a less accessible perspective of the students and serve as also a mode of communication between the students and the board. And we are extremely excited to continue, um, you know, working with the board in these next few months. But regarding communication, uh, Andre, you want to talk a little bit about our accounts?
Yes. So, um, we did just create an Instagram account and an email. Both of these are ran by us. And in addition to the Instagram account and trying to keep a good level of communication between everybody, this is for us, created by us. So if you have any like questions or anything, you want to reach out to us or all the new information about what we're doing or something that's happening within the school is going to go on these Instagrams, on our stories or as opposed itself, on our personal Instagrams. There is a Google form right now going around about student responses. We need these student responses. They're going to shape your learning experience. It's good to know where we're at. So if you want to follow our Instagram, it is W O Student Reps. I'll repeat it. W O Student Reps. And the link for the form is in the bio. And if you have any questions, our email is in there as well. You can email us, DM us, whatever you want. We're here for you.
Awesome. Yeah. And, um, we also, that Google form that we, uh, kind of put out, we thought would be a really great way to kind of evaluate, uh, where students are standing right now. We have almost 800 responses so far, and we think it's just been so tremendously successful. So we're really looking forward to, you know, getting a better idea of where students stand. Finally, uh, we would just like to conclude with another thank you throughout this very, you know, strange past few weeks. I think, uh, from what me and Andre could understand, students were a little bit concerned about the lack of communication between them and administration. However, I, we feel that the administration has acknowledged this and made great strides in addressing it. And we just cannot thank you enough for, you know, taking this issue seriously and making such a significant effort to adequately address it. And we are very, very hopeful, um, you know, to continue working on the board for the remainder of the year and, you know, are just very thankful for, you know, everything that the board has done thus far to keep students safe and to keep virtual learning moving smoothly. So thank you very much. And that concludes our presentation.
All right. Great. Thank you very much, both of you. All right. Dr. C.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Good evening, members of the board, colleagues and community members in attendance tonight. Thank you for joining us. I would just like to, um, just commend our student liaisons. I want to thank you not only for the work you're doing as student liaisons and really being proactive and taking that initiative, but just, it's just great to hear, um, positive, um, positive voices, voices of, of initiative, voices of courage, right? In, in, you know, in continuing to move forward as students, as people amidst obviously challenges and obviously not in a, in a manner and it kind of operating in the way we would prefer, but so inspired to hear of the great work you're doing and that students are doing during this time. Appreciate the positive feedback relative to responsiveness. And, and just thank you for everything you're doing as well and, and being that connection to, to the student body. So just wanted to, before we, we get in, we have a number of several reports tonight. And we want to obviously give an opportunity for, for board members to, to, to ask questions. But I just thought it would be appropriate to, to circle back with, with some of our, our goals and just give an update, brief update to the board and to the community very quickly on kind of where we are with our district goals. So, um, I am happy to report that on tonight's agenda, you will see the board approving the submission of the District Performance Review, District Self-Evaluation for the NJQSAC Monitoring. We received our, our testing numbers from the state. I'm happy to report that we, we scored above 80% in the area of curriculum instruction. We've assessed ourselves at 100% in all other areas other than personnel in which we assessed ourselves with a 91%. Now, the county will send a virtual team, if you will, on February 10th to compare, to look at our self-evaluation, then also to examine all of our various artifacts and things of that nature. But we are expecting that, I'm very confident that the county will corroborate the assessments that we've done and that we will have a, a, a more than passing NJQSAC score. So that's underway. We continue to work with our grant writers. I just want to update the community on a couple of grants. In addition to a number of state grants, which we've successfully applied for and been awarded this year, we're also working on some private grants. I had mentioned our American Honda Foundation Grant, which is just being submitted today. And we've started to explore another grant through the Kellogg Foundation, which can be up to $500,000. And I've assembled a team of internal players as well as our grant writing partners next week to begin working on a kindergarten readiness program that we would, um, until such time that we're able to offer more expansive preschool services, kindergarten readiness programs for in particular, um, students from families that are economically disadvantaged and perhaps not able to afford kindergarten. We're just in the concept paper stage of that grant, but we're really excited about that. And we're looking after, going after a big grant, half a million dollars to fund a multi-year kindergarten readiness program. We, um, are coming down the home stretch in terms of identifying a, an outside partner with whom to, work for our diversity, uh, our diversity and equity audit. We foresee moving a partner forward at the next board meeting on the 21st for the board to consider approval of that agreement and begin our work in the new year. Now that work this year and for this half year will really be a, 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 and an analytical period by which we were going to be soliciting feedback, surveying all stakeholder groups. And then really kind of unpacking that information and that data and helping inform, um, future initiatives and future actions. It will be, address all systems. It will not just be, it will be curriculum, of course. It will be recruitment, hiring, retention, but it will also be, you know, technology. It will be parental engagement. It will be facilities. It will be really every aspect which equity could touch. And we would be in a position to present that to the community late spring, uh, early June of this year. I'm happy to, uh, to, to inform the public that, um, all of our building principals are in the process if they have not already established parent advisory councils. I had an excellent meeting of the District Parent Advisory Council, um, two weeks ago. Maybe it was just last Monday. It feels like two weeks ago, but it was a great meeting nonetheless. And just to reiterate to the public, this was, this was a committee that was, um, I solicited names from each of the building principals. There is a representative from each of the building principals. And the criteria that I asked for was a, a parent that was involved, but not necessarily, um, you know, on the PTA exec board. I was looking for diversity in representation on the committee and in, from a gender standpoint, um, you know, racial ethnicity, you know, socioeconomic and parents who quite frankly were not going to be, who would challenge me really, but in a, in a, in a balanced and measured way, but parents who would really be critical thinkers. And it's been, it was, it was a great meeting. A couple of takeaways that came out of that meeting in particular were, one was really the, the need to kind of continue to drill down on our staff development now that we're in a bit of a lull, bit of a rhythm, to, to really start to kind of close gaps in practice from teacher to teacher. And as I said to the staff in an email on Friday, I mean, we, the district's done, has really moved mountains in a relatively short amount of time. And this is, it's not a criticism to say that we have a continuum of capacity and comfort level with technology usage. It's natural that we would have that, but let's be aware of where that is. Let's highlight our exemplars. Let's highlight our, our, our early adopters of technology and, and have them be resources for their colleagues so that we can bring the greatest degree of consistency in the experiences that our kids are having. So I thought that was a, and there were others, but I thought that that was a great example of a really good piece of feedback that came out of that committee, which immediately informed and is driving my conversations with the, with the leadership team, principals and supervisors. I'm also, uh, happy to provide an update on my student superintendent's Equity Advisory Council. You know, they, they are busy like I am. And, and, and so we're, we're trying to stay diligent and move forward with our work. I will be meeting with them this week. We administered a survey to, um, the, the high school on Friday. This was a survey that they created. Of course, you know, I reviewed it along with Ms. Jackson, who's co-chair of the District Diversity and Equity Committee and has been a partner with me on a number of these things. It was an outstanding survey, quite frankly, and it really seeks to gather feedback from high school students on the degree to which they've experienced various forms of, um, whether it be sexism or racism or, or, or ableism, which was actually a new term for me. And so we will be meeting on, I believe, Wednesday to look at the results of those surveys and then for them to help inform a faculty, a student panel that they will present at an upcoming faculty meeting, not unlike some of the student panels we've done with other issues in some of our other schools. So that continues to be some good work that we're doing there with the students and they're great. I mean, they, I tell you, our kids nowadays, boy, I mean, they, they challenge you, they push you, which is good because, you know, sometimes I need a little push, you know, when, when there's so many things competing for your attention. So, um, you know, I tell you, they, they, we have some real, real amazing kids. And, you know, if they, if they hold their world as accountable as they hold me, we're going to be in decent shape with these kids, I tell you. So appreciate that work with them. And as, you know, as it relates to recruitment, hiring and retention, you know, our Director of Personnel, Executive Director Personnel, Dr. Respignani presented on that, um, earlier in the year relative to, um, exploring proactively various partnerships, you know, through which we can gain access to larger numbers of, of diverse candidates who can compete for positions. As I've said before, that was really the, the issue before was that, you know, we would cast a single net, you know, via the New York, the New Jersey Star Ledger and whatever diverse candidates we had was, would be as opposed to being proactive and taking initiative to ensure that we were, um, we, we were selling ourselves out there as well and marketing ourselves to diverse candidates. So we continue to focus on that. There is an additional goal in the Strategic Action Plan, um, in terms of reviewing that. You know, my intention is to take some time over the, uh, the holiday break to kind of start unpacking that and, and be prepared to start those conversations in the new year. So those are just a few updates from, from me. I am very pleased to have some folks here tonight, um, you know, to, to present. You know, there had been, we, we've had a number of meetings and we've talked a lot about this, this premise of social emotional well-being, about student support, um, and, um, you know, the challenges that, that some students, you know, and, and that challenge is real. You know, that challenge is real. Um, and I'm just going to share a little thing with you here. So we, we've started utilizing, um, a, a software called Gaggle. And basically what Gaggle is, is it's, it helps us monitor our, um, our, our digital environment for troublesome language, including, you know, when students express, um, you know, um, you know, desire to do self-harm or, you know, feelings of, of deep anxiety or, or things of that nature. And, you know, we're, we're, we're seeing that. You know, and then those are just, those are just the students who express that. You know, so, um, it's out there, you know, and, and, you know, we all feel to some extent and our young people are no different. In fact, one could argue that as adults and really with a good portion of our life behind us in that perspective, you know, um, we, perhaps maybe we're a little bit more resilient to dealing with it, you know, as opposed to, and, you know, young folks who, you know, this is, you know, they have an understanding like, hey, like this was my school experience. This is supposed to be like this. So there, there's a lot of feelings out there. So, um, you know, so, and our, you know, and so I had this idea, said, you know, let's get Ms. Butler here, our Director of Student Counseling Services, and as importantly, let's get sent some of our dynamite, uh, school counselors here because I know the work they're doing. But I think it's important for our community and the board to get a firsthand look and understanding of the work that they're doing to help support our students on a daily basis. And so with that, I would turn it over to Ms. Butler and her team of, of school counselors and thank them for coming tonight and sharing some of the work they're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. And thank you, Dr. Cascone and the board for affording the opportunity for the school counselors to attend the meeting this evening and to talk about the work that they are doing to address the social and emotional learning of, um, our students. You know, our students and families are experiencing a variety of stresses and trauma during, um, this period of time throughout the past few months. And we want to, um, afford an opportunity to, um, provide the community with the resources and, and, um, the work that we are doing as school counselors to help students and family cope with their current situations and also to build those social and emotional, um, learning competencies. You can go to the next slide. On the, there's five, there's generally five, um, competencies that we focus on, um, in, within the school counseling department. Those are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. Excellent. Um, the school counselors, um, throughout their daily work, these are just a few of the areas that, um, or, or resources, opportunities that they provide to our staff, to our students. And, um, throughout this evening, we want to highlight, uh, the different, um, activities that are done at each one of the grade levels and share with you some of the specific highlights. At each one of the levels, uh, we have representation here from each one of the, um, grade levels. Because the work that they do at each one of those levels to address the social, social and emotional learning competencies are very different. And we wanted to get firsthand information from the individuals at those different levels to kind of walk you through, uh, the work that, um, they are doing. Next. At the schools, um, there's, uh, and I wasn't sure if our audience knew, um, at, at each one of the elementary schools, we have one school counselor. At the middle school levels, we have two school counselors at each one of the schools. And we have one SAC that is divided between Roosevelt and Liberty, Liberty School. At the high school, we have 10 school counselors and two SACs as well. This evening, uh, we have Rebecca Butel. She is from Redwood. And Sarah McIntosh, she is from St. Cloud, that will speak to us a little bit about the elementary, what's going on at the elementary level. Michelle Ellingham will speak to us about, um, the middle school level. And Madeline Fernandez Perez and Catherine Fury will speak to us about what's going on at the high school level. Um, our student assistant councils, we have three, as I had stated, we have one that splits her time between Roosevelt and Liberty. And we have two at the high school. Their roles and responsibilities with, uh, social and emotional learning is, is, uh, dealing with different circumstances that, um, may threaten a student's, um, school performance. They do mental, um, health assessments and makes, and they make any necessary referrals outside and sometimes, uh, within our district, uh, different resources that are available within our district. As it relates to social and emotional learning, they, uh, provide, uh, resources to teachers to embed in their daily work. They have, uh, the, at the high school, we have Wellness Wednesdays throughout the month of, um, of December. Each month, they create a calendar of different, um, resources for the teachers to embed in their, in their daily, um, instruction. At the elementary, I mean, the middle school level, uh, the, uh, the SAC at that level, she, um, hosts different lunch bunch and new student check-ins. And Ms. Ellingham, she, she will, um, talk to us a little bit more about what that looks, what those things look like. These, uh, they provide, um, individual counseling on a daily basis. At times waking students up in the morning to make sure that they are engaged in the learning process and checking in with them at the end of the day to make sure that things have gone well with them. They conduct one-on-one, um, counseling sessions, uh, with our students who are experiencing, uh, various, uh, socially emotional issues or concerns, um, virtually with, uh, them. They conduct, uh, parent conferences, uh, helping stu, uh, parents or providing parents with different strategies to, uh, develop routines if necessary with their children at home. They work collaboratively with the administrative teams at each one of the buildings. Either through staff referrals, administrations, um, referrals and follow-up with them as well. They're also very instrumental in, um, uh, our, our community resource development. They, um, are our, our go-to person when there's various resources within the community that we need to link up with for whatever the reasons may be. Um, the two, the two, uh, resource counselors at the high school are Mr. Characello and Ms. Headlam. And at the Roosevelt Liberty, it's Ms. Brotsman. Each one of them have virtual offices. And if you go on to our district website, you'll have an opportunity to look at their virtual office and we'll share some of the information that's contained within those virtual offices as we move forth within this presentation. At this time, I'm going to ask Sarah McIntosh and Rebecca Butel if they would speak to us a little bit about, uh, the elementary schools.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Um, so at the elementary level, our biggest priority starting the school year remote was to make sure that there was no laps in services for our students, uh, both proactively and reactively. So going back to over the summer, the school counseling department spent a good amount of time preparing professional development for the teachers in order to prepare them for beginning the school year with some social emotional learning time allotted them in the day. So we provided teachers with activities, resources such as morning meetings, sentence starters, and, uh, continue with those activities and resources as the school year has progressed to be utilized during that structured, uh, SEL period. Then we took a look at our programming and made a concerted effort to make sure that we were able to transition our services to platforms that were easily accessible, therefore making us easily accessible. We meet with teachers both formally through the I and R S and 504 process and informally during grade level meetings to discuss how we can best support the students in this virtual learning environment. We interact with teachers, with parents via email, phone calls, Zoom meetings, and by providing resources on our school websites that we each run. So in the brick and mortar setting, um, we go into classrooms and we teach the, the in-person lessons. Now we pop into the teacher Zoom and teach the virtual equivalent of our lessons there. Where we would formally invite students from lunch or recess to join us for a lunch bunch for some social skills development. Now we have weekly meetups, uh, for all the grade levels where all students are invited to come join us and spend time in a social environment that's sort of that academic piece. But ultimately, the area we were most concerned about, um, addressing from the very beginning was providing students with the opportunity to connect with us at will, similar to how we would be available. was providing students with the opportunity to connect with us at will, similar to how we would be available during the school day. So many of our interactions with students happen organically throughout the day when something may come up that they need us to, to be available to them. So we were sensitive to the need to replicate this in our virtual remote setting. We've accomplished this through a number of some interactive opportunities. We each have Google classrooms for every grade level where students can contact us directly. We have digital self-referral forums where students can actually log on to that form and we will contact them through the method of their choosing. And finally, when a teacher recognizes the need for the counselor to intervene in the midst of that synchronous academic setting, we will often enter that Zoom call and be placed into a breakout room with the student to kind of work through whatever is going on and figure out some supports moving forward. Ultimately, the social, the emotional, the mental health of our students is paramount at all times. And we ask if there's anything we can do to help in any way, please don't hesitate to reach out. So now I'm actually going to turn it over to my colleague Sarah McIntosh to share some of our district-wide initiatives.
Thank you. Can we show the next slide, please? One of the things we do as elementary school counselors is we're about developing school climate and we often do school-wide activities. So this year, all seven elementary schools have the same school-wide theme. It's respect others, protect others. And this theme helps address two really important questions in our lives. How can we be good citizens during a global pandemic? And how can we be upstanders for social justice? So in school, we're teaching the students that we show respect to others by wearing masks, by social distancing, but by also by understanding and embracing diversity and being upstanders. This theme was introduced to our students during the Week of Respect in October, and we're continuing to do school-wide activities throughout the school year. And I'd like to highlight a very special project we did. Every elementary student was invited to participate. We shared a reading of the children's book, All Are Welcome. And then each student was asked to create a Google slide highlighting all the ways their family is special. And then we took a section of these slides and we've made a district-wide slideshow. And when you look at the slides, I have two samples up here on the board now. It is amazing. West Orange families are the coolest. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to get the children to go from, well, when they're really little, it's okay that people are different to, I understand how you're different and my understanding how you're different makes my life richer. I can stand up for you. Will you stand up for me? If people are giving us a hard time about our differences. And so that we're pushing the conversation forward and we're using this theme throughout the year. Now I'd like to introduce Michelle Ellingham. She's one of the school counselors from Roosevelt to talk about middle school.
Good evening, everyone. The middle school is a very interesting place based upon, you know, the developmental growth and where they're at in terms emotionally and socially. So we have been focused very, we have been very focused on social, emotional, and mental health. But not only just for students, because it's not just students who are exhibiting or needing assistance with social emotional skills and mental health resources, but it's also the parents and the teachers. So some of the things that we started the year off with was we, we invited all of our students to, to meet with us in small groups to just reintroduce ourselves to our eighth grade students and to once again introduce ourselves to the seventh grade students who have not had any experience with us whatsoever in terms of face-to-face. Students were invited, we, you know, talked about how the school year was going, how is it different from last year? What do they hope to get out of the new experience as they move into the 2021 school year? And what are some of the things that they miss most about not being in school? And one of the themes that constantly came up was, I miss my friends. I miss being with the people that I care for. And it's not just texting them or calling them, but actually physically being with them. So one of the things that we took from that was we started these Lunch with Friends groups. And I know I'm kind of like putting the cart before the horse, but as, you know, things kind of all tie together and they go through different slides. So what we did is we invited students to express an interest as to whether or not they would like to have the opportunity to have lunch with their friends one day a week in pretty much a non-structured environment, sort of more like it would look like in a school cafeteria with obviously adults present, but allowing them the freedom to speak freely with each other. And some of the things that have taken place with Lunch with Friends groups is they play Uno while they're having lunch. They talk about projects that they have to do and maybe what they can do together to kind of, without having to spend extra out-of-school time. They love it. I mean, the kids just absolutely love it who participate. Unfortunately, we have a half an hour, which is from 11:30 to 12:10, but we have to give them time to kind of like transition back into being classroom mode. So, and we only have five days a week. So it's kind of hard to get everyone involved that we would like to get involved. But we're figuring out as we go along and children, our, our students are constantly asking us how they can join or how they can participate. We provide weekly, it used to be twice a week. We used to provide a twice-a-week wellness check-in, which was a Google form, Mondays and Fridays, asking how they're doing. Are they okay? If they're not okay, what do they need from us to help them, you know, kind of work through whatever is going on? As soon as that was submitted, Mr. Lawrence, who would get all the responses with Papa's email, say, "Check in with, check in with, check in with." So the first thing we did was right away, we sent an email. "Hi, see, you're struggling a little bit. What can we do to help you? Let's meet with Zoom or, you know, will an email suffice? So we'd like us to call you. And if so, what number would you like us to call on?" So we tried to make ourselves available to them in any which way was possible. That was shared between Karen Peragros, who is my coworker at Roosevelt. However, I know the same process is taking place at Liberty Middle School and also at Edison. It's real important that we have a pulse of how the students are feeling. And often, if, they don't really express to the, to us what's going on initially. It takes two or three or four communications to really get to the underlying issues. But they are appreciative of the fact that we reach out to them. And now, as I said, we're only doing it once a week, which is on Fridays. Because we don't want them to go into weekend with, with concerns or just not feeling well. We've provided classroom lessons. We do Google Classroom activities. There are always posted, parents have been invited who have actually signed up, have been invited to the Google Classroom. They can see everything that we provide there. We do risk assessments based upon the wellness check-ins and also just emails that students may send us on a weekend during the evening. We collaborate with Heidi Brotsman, who is our SAC, as do, as does Liberty. And if there's any concerns there, Ms. Brotsman reaches out to them. We always provide appropriate referrals as necessary. And once again, we anti-bullying, the advocates for providing a positive and safe school environment. And we provide programs and experiences for them to, to get more in touch with what it means to be an upstander and not so much either a bystander or a bullyer. Next slide, please. Okay. All right. So some of the, so when you look at how our children are feeling quickly. A student who is perhaps feeling sad or anxious shuts down because they don't know how to attack what it is that they still need to do. And, and often they become so bogged down in, in just trying to figure out how to dig themselves out of the hole, that they just get further and further behind in the hole. So some of the things that we as school counselors have is, and what I found particularly effective for myself is I have good students. I get a far better response and open up a better line of communication than strictly just sending an email or making a phone call because oftentimes the mail box is full because parents are getting lots of. It's like, I had one student with 600 emails in his inbox. He had no idea where to begin. It's impossible. So texting is a great option if, you know, counselors are open to doing that. So what do we do? Well, we have, we do 504 plans for students who have been identified with disabilities. However, they're not learning disabilities and lots of different things fall underneath that category. We go to weekly team meetings to talk to, to talk to the teachers specifically about students of their concern, who is or is not doing, what we can do to support them. We have one-on-one meetings with our caseloads. And by the way, each middle school is a little bit different. At Edison Middle School, they divide half the alphabet, or they have two counselors and counselors take half the alphabet and the other counselor takes the other half of the alphabet. That's the same thing as at Roosevelt. We share students at both grade levels. So my caseload is for students A through K. Ms. Peragros is students L through Z. But yet, no student is just ours alone. We all are responsible for all the children and always will step in where there is a need. Liberty, they do it by grade level and that just works for them. So, you know, each school is a little bit different, but we will provide the same services. So we make phone calls, we conference with parents of students at risk. We have had follow-up meetings with teachers to note the progress and to see whether or not any change has taken place. I found that a lot of these young people just need someone to touch base and say, "I care. What can I do to help you? How do you go about attacking your day-to-day assignments? What do you need to do to become more organized?" Because in many cases, there's no one, parents are working. So they're either on their own with an older sibling, or sometimes there's younger siblings in the home, and they just don't know what to do. So one-on-one meetings with them is really very important and critical, I think, to their success. For the students who do not do well first marking period, we have certain struggles getting in touch with them. But, you know, that's, that's not uncommon. And we just keep trying and sending emails and trying to call home, trying to get the parents to respond to us. But they have all been notified that their students are not doing well. We invite them to Zoom meetings. Sometimes they attend, sometimes they don't attend. It's tough for some of these kids and they're really, they need, I hate to say it, but they need school. And then once again, we're starting academic planning for the next school year. We are looking at the transition from the eighth to ninth grade. So, you know, we're meeting tomorrow with the high school to start that discussion process. We do a lot of testing for the heritage program, which is at the high school. We're planning meetings for having the eighth graders understand the difference between the different programs at the high school, the IHS, the IMS. At, not at, I'm sorry, yes, Avid, TCI, which it is now called Collegiate Institute. Some of the other programs that require applications, and we're still working through logistics of all of this with Cheryl Butler and, you know, others in our department because it's, it's different. And we will make it work. And also, we do a lot with career exploration. And we've started recently having on Fridays, college tours with schools that have virtual tours so that students can get a sense of what colleges look like, what they feel like, where they might want to go, some of the strengths and weaknesses of the programs. And that has also been, the kids love it. They, you know, that's probably more than going in and Googling a college. They want to see what it's all about. So that has been very, very successful. The next slide, please. Okay. So a big thing of what we do at, at the middle school level is we do newsletters. And in each middle school, it looks a little bit different. However, I can speak to Roosevelt's. We do a monthly newsletter. And in that monthly newsletter, we have such wonderful tips for parents. We talk about Screenagers. We talk about some of the organizations that are providing free counseling services for parents who might be in stress. We have informational articles. We talk about what happened the month before in our school and why, you know, it was successful and what will be upcoming in the, in the next month. And if you click on one of them, if you could click on like the first one, please, whoever is clicking.
Ah, yes, just give me one moment.
Not a problem.
Click on the newsletter?
Yeah. Whoops.
There you go.
Yeah, okay. So, let me see, because I, I minimized my screen. I, I am not that good at all of this. I am learning. Let's see.
It's all good. We're seeing right now the Roosevelt Middle School newsletter recap on October.
See, there's a lot of really good information on there. If you can scroll through the whole thing and share that with the participants. We have information from the state of New Jersey regarding programs that parents might find beneficial at this time. Social and emotional learning areas. National American Heritage Month, Screenagers. So our, actually, Ms. Peragros and I are very proud of our newsletter because we think it really provides a lot of support for families and a lot of good, just common information that everyone can use. Okay. All right. And then if you're taking me back to the screen, to the, to the slide. And here, as you can see listed, are many of the clubs that are offered within the three schools. They're not all the same at all schools, but that's a general overview of what middle school clubs and activities encompass. And this is another great social avenue that students can get involved in, which provides them the social platform to interact with their peers in a positive way. It's different than if we were in school, if we were in the brick and mortar school, but we're still getting it out there and the, and the students, I think, are benefiting from it. Next slide. Yeah, next. I think the next slide is the high schools. Does, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy. Oh, no, this is our next slide. Okay, our next slide is an example of a Google Classroom page that is from Lauren Fulby at Liberty Middle School. And on the other two slides, there are two middle school virtual offices. There's mine and Ms. Nesbit's from Liberty Middle School. And if you click on them, let's see, click on them, you can, I can't click on them, but if you click on them, you can navigate it. So.
I just clicked on the first one.
Okay, that's fine. That would be me. And if you go, and if you just navigate through it, like if you click on the, above me, there is in yellow. Wish I could see it better.
The contact info here?
Yes, you can click on that. And you can see how it's navigational and students and parents and whoever else needs to get in there can certainly do so. And, you know, we're just really trying our best to support families and students. And at this time, I think that parents, yeah, they're probably struggling as much in many instances as the students because they really don't know how to help their children. And that's one of the things that we are really focused on by reaching out and constantly having meetings with the parents and the students and the teachers and with just the counseling office in general. And, you know, providing them comfort in this time of distress. So I think it's time now we can introduce the high school counselors.
Thank you. We have Madeline Fernandez Perez and Catherine Fury, who are going to share some of what happens at the high school.
Hi, my name is Catherine Fury, and thank you for having us here this evening. At the high school level, the school counselors are very busy. Their busy season is really from September to January. We're busy all year long. But meeting new students, schedules, college applications, even not on a virtual platform, we are very busy. So our focus with meeting our students' needs on this platform was two things we really concentrated on. One being communication and collaboration between our students and parents, which we found was so critical to take place in this fall based on what we saw in the springtime. And the sec, the second thing that we really focused was how can we reach all of our students in a timely manner? Because our students are in school in the morning time, so really that leaves us the afternoon. And often, I think, we sometimes focus And often, I think, we sometimes focus on particular groups. Maybe students who aren't performing academically, maybe students who are having some emotional needs that have come to our attention. But really, in this virtual platform, every student needs a connection. And we need to focus on reaching all of our students. So, what I have done is, we have put together a little counseling department video just to highlight some of, some of the things that the high school department has been doing over the last few months to really reach all of our students, teachers, and support our faculty at this time. So with further ado, if we could click on.
Yes, I'm actually gonna, give me one second, because I have it embedded in the agenda so we can have it nice and big for you guys. Give me one second.
We created this video also because we know most high school students don't go home and share with their parents all of the time what's taking place at the high school level. And we keep that communication open, but sometimes, you know, parents are busy and they don't necessarily get to read all of the information. We thought it'd be best to show it and highlight it on this platform.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
The ten school counselors at West Orange High School have been hard at work to ensure that they are finding innovative ways to stay connected to their students and to deliver curriculum on a virtual platform. In addition to the traditional methods of communication, including phone, email, and Naviance, each counselor has created a Google Classroom where important announcements and information is shared. Each counselor has also created a virtual office packed full of resources. Let's take a tour of a virtual office to see all that it has to offer. First, you could see that students and families have the opportunity to make an appointment with their school counselor directly through the virtual office by simply clicking on the link. You can also find other important links, including Power School and Naviance, the school calendar and announcements, tech support, and important forms such as working papers and transcript request forms. There are also links to academic study skills and college and career planning resources. With an emphasis on social, emotional learning, now more than ever, there is a virtual calming room and a list of supportive resources, including access to connect with our outstanding students, assistants, counselors. The counselors' virtual offices are accessible in their Google Classrooms and in their email signatures. In September, senior meetings were held in small groups via Zoom in the afternoons after instructional time. These meetings covered critical information about the college application process and financial aid and scholarships. Over twenty-two hundred college applications have been processed so far this school year. Here's a sneak peek into a senior meeting held earlier this year.
So when you're applying to college, you know, many of the colleges are going to be requesting transcripts, which is a copy of your academic record, your academic resume, really. I provided each of you already a copy of your unofficial transcript, which was also filled with the, this senior checklist. So you all have access to it.
In October, freshman meet and greet meetings were held in small groups via Zoom in the afternoons after instructional time similar to the senior meetings. Ninth grade students were provided with the opportunity to officially meet their school counselor. They were also provided with information about the importance of freshman year, including grades, GPA, and extracurricular involvement. Counselors ensured that students had access to Power School, Naviance, their Google Classroom, and Virtual Office. Students also completed a survey for counselors to get to know them better. Here is a closer look at a freshman meeting conducted earlier this year.
Freshman students account. What I wanted to point out to each of you is the freshman year survival guide that we have prepared here for you with just some important links to some things that you might want to take a look at just to become more familiar with.
Over the next few months, the school counselors' outreach continues. In the month of December, counselors will be visiting all sophomore and junior history classes to present important information about college and career planning. In January and February, counselors will meet with students in all grades to complete course scheduling for the 2021-22 school year. In February through the spring, counselors will meet with eleventh grade students once again and their families for individualized conferences for future planning. The West Orange High School counselors are grateful to work with an outstanding group of students, families, and staff. Here is some positive feedback and support we have received from this awesome community that we are also lucky to be a part of. So that's just a quick glimpse of the overall programs and the outreach. We try to meet with students on top of our daily meetings and check-ins with students. We will continue to reach out. And if there are any questions for the high school counselors, Ms. Fernandez Perez and myself would be more than happy to answer.
Once again, I want to thank the board and Dr. Cascone for affording us an opportunity to come and share some of our, the work of the school counselors. Our goal is to continue to maintain a positive working relationship with our students and their families and to continue to open a line of communication with all and so that everyone understands how to communicate with us, when to communicate with us, and the way in which they can communicate with us. So thank you once again.
Thank you, Ms. Butler, and thank you all the school counselors who joined today, tonight, rather. I'm going, you've been very busy and we appreciate all the work. I know your days are probably filled with outreach to students and parents. And so, I know that's greatly appreciated by many, including myself, so thank you. And I'll just turn it back over to Mr. Alper in order that he can facilitate some Q and A from the board.
Great, yeah, we'll open it up for some questions from the board. Why don't we mix it up tonight and start with Mr. Rothstein?
I was so excited for a second there that you were gonna mix it up. Always starts with me. So many of these presentations are just, I find myself thinking a couple of things. One, okay, we're recording this. Can we now do that again? Because there's so much that, that we just, that we just learned that was so helpful. And I actually kind of want to start with a, with a personal comment more so than a, than a question, but just a, a comment to share with, with everyone from the counseling staff here. The, the man who was my high school counselor passed away last week. And I didn't personally have a lot of involvement with him at all, but on my high school Facebook page, the outpouring from many students who, who I know who were in my class and so many people, all of these years later, I mean, I graduated a long time ago from high school, but all of these years later, the stories that came out about what an impact this man had on their lives was really very, very emotional and very uplifting. And so, thank you, you know, for what you do. And I know that there are so many students whose lives are impacting and touching. So, just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for that. Let's see, one, I think that most of, mostly as I'm looking through my notes, it's, I, I'm so grateful for this presentation to learn a lot of details that I wasn't aware of, of exactly how at each of the different grade levels, you're reaching out to students and families to be, to be involved, excuse me, involved and helpful. I love so many of these ideas and opportunities. The, the outreach at the middle school level, I loved, I forget which presenter said it, but the outreach to not only students, but to parents and teachers as well, which is so critical. The lunch with, with friends group idea is such a terrific one. And I would imagine there must be a limit on that, but I found myself wondering how many of these programs that are being invented, I assume an idea like that is invented right now during COVID, will have legs and will have a value after we're back at school. And hopefully, these things are being tracked and, and some of them can be carried out. Mrs. Ellingham said, I thought it was funny the way that you started it off. I hate to say it, but kids need school. And yes, they do, and something that we're all so, so painfully aware of. And I'm just so glad that we've got this amazing counseling staff to help get them and all of us through this, through this time. Mrs. Fury said, every student needs a connection. Just these little statements that stood out to me that speak so clearly to, to where your focus is. And I could have sworn that I had a question, and for the life of me, I'm trying to find where I wrote it down. But, but I think in general, what it comes down to is just a really basic question of, I'm impressed by all of the opportunities for outreach. I know that it's got to be challenging because there's always students out there who need assistance, who need some kind of help, and they're not reaching out for it. And when they're not handraisers, it's got to be incredibly challenging to locate them and to get them the assistance that they need. And so, I was just wondering if there's anything that you can share in a little more detail about, as a group, what you're able to do to help identify those students who aren't raising their hands or their parents aren't necessarily raising their hands on their behalf? How is it that we're, that we're locating those students and helping them?
I can speak for elementary school. The teachers are bonded with their class. They know, the kids know each other. Teachers see a student who usually is on right at nine o'clock, who doesn't show up until nine oh six the first day and then nine fourteen the next day, they're reaching out to us immediately. So we see who looks tired. We see who's disheveled. And the, well, the teachers see it and we work as a team. And so, you know, we have regular meetings on, you know, anyone not showing up, anyone not doing their homework, anyone not doing their Friday work. So we're very, elementary school, we're really on top of it. I don't feel that kids are slipping through the crack because we are all over them because the teachers have them for that whole chunk of time.
That's great.
I could speak at the high school. A lot of it comes from the teachers as well that make us aware. I think attendance and grades play a big part in it as well. As counselors, we're constantly reviewing their grades and attendance, and we work closely with their deans and setting up meetings to really address when something comes across our desk. We also have check-ins, like for example, when we did the freshman survey, one of the questions was, how is this year going for you? And if there was some type of survey that came back that indicated, not so great, I'm having trouble, then as a counselor, we would know that we would have to reach out to them to have that dialogue, to make sure they're getting the support they need.
And at the middle school level, often our best source of information is from other students, surprisingly, or not surprisingly enough. They'll reach out, they'll send an email, and they'll say, hey, Mrs. Ellingham, or hey, Ms. Perros, or Ms. Wolfbe, or whatever, whoever it is, you know, something's off with so-and-so. I'm just concerned, can you reach out to them? And, you know, that's what we do. We, we take, maybe nothing, it may just have been having a bad day on that particular day. Whatever, it may be something more. And by having a caring friend, you know, say, I have a friend who needs help. You know, that, that affords us another opportunity to reach out and say, hey, how's it going?
And just to piggyback off of what everyone is saying, you know, you also have to remember that we have a lot of longitudinal data, and may, maybe informally, but we've had these kids for a long period of time. You know, at the elementary level, I've been with my fifth graders for six years. So the teachers are really great at reaching out and saying, listen, is this typical of this child? This is what I'm seeing. Have you seen that before? And that's really important that we kind of had the pulse on what's going on now, but we also have the history for what, you know, preceded this virtual setting.
And not only at the, not only specifically at the elementary levels where you have that history, but throughout the district, from grade level to grade level, from school to school, we're having those conversations to see, is there a student or was there a student that was experiencing any difficulties? At the beginning of the school year, we had identified students at each one of the schools that were transitioning to another school and were experiencing different concerns. And we were able to connect with that student at the beginning of the school year to kind of build upon the areas where they needed that, that help, that support.
It's really so great to hear.
Really quickly, and my apologies, I just want to add real quickly about, at the high school level, I think the biggest thing is that we collaborate on a real global level with everyone, with the assistant principals, yes, with the deans, with the teachers, with the students. The teachers reach out to us when they see something, when they notice something. I've reached out to the middle school counselors when there's a student that I'm not familiar with, and we're trying to work collaboratively to see, or really to determine, is this a new thing that is occurring that ran out with the transition? Or is this something that has continued on and what has worked and what hasn't? So it's always just continuously providing strategies and interventions at every moment possible to get them to a point where hopefully they're at a better place. But it is really a moment-to-moment situation that we address at the high school level and I'm sure really at the district.
So I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm so encouraged by the readiness of these answers and to see one person says something and everybody else is nodding their heads in agreement like, yes, that's what we do. It's terrific. Thank you all so much. I really enjoyed the presentation.
All right, great. Ms. Triggs Gals.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and kudos to each of you and to all of you. I'm just amazed at the extent to which you've gone to reach out to our students because I know how difficult it is at this point in time. I wrote down all the things that I liked, so I have a whole list here. Mr. Rothstein touched on some of them. The district-wide slideshow, I thought, was really cool because we don't often have opportunities to come together as a school district, especially during a pandemic. So I thought that was just an excellent idea to be able to showcase all of our schools at the elementary level. Also, at the middle school, I wanted to, I think I'm going backwards in my pad. Hold on a second. The wellness check-ins. I want to know how often we're doing those and exactly how we're doing those. And I, I think, I'm sorry, I think someone had mentioned, I'm not sure, that they were happening during, during social studies or going into the social studies class. So if someone could just expand on that for me, the wellness check-ins.
Okay. What we do at the, at the beginning of the school year, one of the challenges was how to get students to be able, to get this information from students. So we came up with a Google form, God bless Google, right, and God bless forms. And we sent them out first period, which is basically when they took attendance. The first thing the students did was they took, they filled out the form and they submitted it. From there, the responses went to Mr. Lawrence, who was our vice principal, and he, and then in turn, let us know who stated that they had either some concerns or just needed a check-in, you know, do you need to talk to a counselor now? You know, is later in the day, okay, whatever it was, I can't remember the wording exactly, so I don't want to speak that term. But then, the kids, and we did that Mondays and Fridays at the beginning of the week and at the end of the week. Half, I guess at the end of first marking period, the teachers felt that once a week was adequate because they now had a pulse on the students as well. So if something came up before the official check-in on Fridays, they would let us know. And so, we get the data on Friday, we respond to it, and we send out emails automatically.
So it's required that every student fill out?
Well, it is required, however, ultimately, you know, we don't control, I can't control that. I can't control somebody whether or not they're going to complete a form or not, but it is supplied to every single student in the building, yes.
Okay, so my follow-up would be what?
A phone, an email, initial, an email, you know. Hi, it's been brought Hi, um, it's been brought to my, you know, I'm Mrs. Ellingham, I'm your counselor, um. And I understand that you requested today to speak to a counselor. Um, please let me know, you know, by email, if you would like me to call you or we want to do a Google Zoom or whatever it is. And then once they determine the best line of communication, that's how we follow through on that. So sometimes it's a Zoom meet, sometimes it's just a phone call. Um, sometimes they'll supply us with their cell phone number, which is wonderful because then you can call them directly. Because sometimes they really don't want their parents involved in, you know, some of the things that are going on. But once again, always it's with confidentiality in mind, but yet if there's a need to inform someone else, we certainly do that.
Right, so if you don't get a form, you follow up. With those youngsters. If they don't complete a form.
No, I will, I'll be honest with you, no. If they don't complete a form, because we have 500 plus students in the building and on every, on any given Friday, it could be more than half the kids who don't respond. Um. They're just, it's just unfortunately not possible, although I, you know, I would not mind not doing that, but. I just don't know how to logistically make that work so that we can reach every student, um, personally every day.
Okay, fine. And the college tours, I think that's a fabulous idea, you know, we, we say college begins in kindergarten, but. Taking the tours at the middle school level, I think that's such an incentive for them. Um, I love your newsletters and the, um. Those virtual counseling offices with the little avatars everybody has, I think those are really so cool. And, um. January and February at the high school, um, we're going to begin the scheduling process, or was that also middle school?
It's middle school as well, um, tomorrow we have a meeting with. The high school, at which time they will go over changes to curriculum, um. New courses, courses that, you know, may be not relevant anymore. Uh, what their due dates are for, um, submitting. The requests moving forward for the middle school level, because once again, we have to do it. In our buildings and then we have to send them on to the high school. So it's kind of like, it's very crunch time in January through like the end of January into February because. Everybody wants daddy yesterday.
Right.
Um, but we get it done and, um. It's just that we're not, you know, we're just trying to figure out how the best way to, to get this information out is obviously it is going to be a lot of forms and. And then transmitting, putting the information into Power School and then having the high school, maybe being able to access that information from Power School.
Great, great. And just for the, the high school, um. Just really pleased that we are able to, um. Reach all the students in a timely manner and that we're able to. Um, have some sort of a freshman orientation. That was great that you're able to get into the, at the beginning of the year and with the smaller. Um, classes at the end of the day, I think that's really important and especially. Um, two thousand two hundred and eighty-four college apps so far, so. Again, kudos to the high school counselors because that's a lot of work with recommendations and navions and all that stuff that I know you have to do, so. Kudos, that, that's fabulous. So thank you to everybody, fabulous job. Um, I feel much better, I feel, um, much more assured that our children are getting what they need. And as I said, it seems as if you've left no stone unturned as to how to, how to reach them, so thank you.
You, uh, Ms. Merklinger.
Hi, so I just want to thank everyone, um, that was great to see all the wonderful things that we're doing and really paying attention to, you know, the mental health of our students and, and parents. Um, I did, in the interest of time, I'm just gonna kind of just jump to, um, some of my questions, um, because Gary and, uh, Terry have. Kind of hit on all the fabulous things that are going on, um. And I just had a few questions, um, in terms of best practices, um, so you hear a lot, um, of, you know, sharing amongst, um. The student, the counselors reaching out to principals and teachers within the schools, but I'm just wondering, um. And, you know, maybe for the community's knowledge, um, do you share best practices across schools? So, um, you know, we're seeing like the avatar, uh. Counselor, those rooms at the high school level, are we sharing those best practices with the elementary schools? And have we thought about, um, incorporating those into the younger classrooms or into the younger, uh, age levels at the middle and elementary schools? Um. And, and what, what does that look like in terms of best practice sharing across, uh, all the schools?
Generally, what happens is that weekly, I can say that we have department meetings with, um, well, grade level, elementary. Um, the middle school and the high, and we have, uh, transition meetings also. Um, we share the information, we have a Google shared drive. Um, and the counselors probably get sick of me saying, go to this folder. But, uh, we have a Google Drive where we share everything that we do. All the work that we do at each one of the schools, each one of the buildings across, uh, the entire district. We share it with each other and, um, with hopes of each, each of us, um, you know, kind of taking, not. Inventing the wheel, you know, we just take. That which is given. The other thing is that, uh, because of the community. Uh, we want there to be some consistency across the board. So there are some things that we do want to be consistent. And so we want to share that. So at the high school, when the decision was made that. One person did their little avatar, um, office. There was no doubt that everyone was going to do it. When, um, the high school had did theirs, the middle school then saw it and they were like, hey, that's what we want to do. So, um, we, we do, um, share, um, the information either through our weekly meetings or through, um, our Google Drive.
Great.
Just to kind of piggyback off that, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Merklinger, just. When speaking about best practices, I think it's also important to note that sometimes best practice is recognizing our unique populations at the different, you know, schools and grade levels. So whereas at my school, you know, Class Dojo is a great platform, our parents really enjoy that. Some other schools, they found that, let's say, school messenger is a better way to get the information across to parents. So sometimes, you know, while we're collaborating at all times, it's also recognizing that the different populations we have at the different schools and at the different levels. Necessitates some unique perspectives and some platforms that are, you know, not being used district-wide.
Uh, that's great to hear because that actually segues right into my next question, so that was perfect. Um, you know, with, with the different populations within each of our schools, um, I'm just wondering if we're seeing. A disparity of, um, communication, so. Um, Washington and Hazel being our title one schools, are we seeing some of the differences there with versus Gregory or St. Cloud or Kelly? I was about to say Pleasantale, I apologize, um, you know, are we seeing, um. You know, at the elementary level, especially because these are younger students and younger children. Um. You know, who are relying on parents to log in for them first in some cases, um, and a lot of parent involvement. Are we seeing a disparity and how are we, um, addressing that with those parents or those, uh, those communities?
Well, I will say, all of our elementary kids are logging in themselves. They get kicked out, they all know how to come back, they all had mute, unmute, participation buttons. So that part is all equal. The district's been great about getting devices into everyone's hands. Um, there is some different scene with more students home with older siblings. In our title one schools than in some of our other schools, not that there's none, but we have s- students with less parental support because the parents are out working. And they're not working, they don't have jobs where they work from home. Um, so yes, we see it, but, uh, I mean, that's where like, you know, look at the staff of Washington and Hazel. And you see how those teachers adapt and in so many, they go, they go above and beyond in different ways than the other awesome teachers in West Orange. I mean, I know for myself, I've already been to four houses, dropping stuff off because I know the parents can't come, and that's at St. Cloud. And so, um, you know, many of us have gone out to houses or the principals or another designee has gone out to houses to drop stuff off. Um, and help out when we know that it's just not going to be able to be done by the parents because they have other obligations.
That's great to hear, thank you. Um, and you know, so one of the other things that, you know, in speaking about mental health, um, and we do have parents in the community that are struggling and we've had some. Um, pretty, you know, upsetting situations occur, I'm just wondering, um. Uh, you know, I have family members that are in the social work, uh, community and, and hotlines are down sixty percent. Um. You know, are we seeing? Um. Or how are we addressing and able to help students who may be encountering physical or emotional abuse at home? And don't recognize or don't know how to use those hotlines, um. And are afraid because they are home or their parents are working from home and, and I think it's, it's real, um, right now to understand that, that parents are struggling, they're overwhelmed. Um, so just how are we addressing or handling that and what resources, um, if we could just reiterate those for parents? That they can reach out to if they are struggling and having those, um, finding themselves overwhelmed and, and in those, that situation.
So we, we, at the high school level, we use perform care. Often with families that need resources within the home. You could call them, it's free of cost. They will send someone to your home, they will speak with the children, they will speak with the parents. And they will determine what type of services the family needs, whether that be individual counseling, family counseling. Uh, a big buddy for the children within the home, so that's a first good step. For our, our families to utilize in terms of support.
Another very good step is reach out to the school counselors. A lot of times families do not reach out to the school counselors. Um. For whatever the reason may be, in each one of the buildings, we have at least one school counselor. I encourage families, um, reach out to the school counselors. The school counselors can lead and guide you to the resources, um, that is needed. Uh, most of the time, uh, all of the time, I won't even say most of the time, all the time. Uh, school councils are extremely responsive to any, um, email, phone call. That they may receive in reference to a, a situation where the families having difficulty coping. Um, adjusting, uh, in any, um, given situation. I would say even like, um, um, h- helping families find various resources, be it. Food, how, housing sometimes, um, just, just various resources. Uh, we connect families with those resources, so I would say if. Reach out to the school counselors, they are able to. Lead you to those resources and provide those resources to you. It's important to us as a school counseling department to build and, and, and develop those relationships with families. The more that we build and develop those relationships to families, the more likely it is that they will come to us. As that initial, uh, point of contact and, um. Reach out to the school counselors.
Thank you. Um, so just to kind of build off of that, um, I know, uh, Dr. Cascone mentioned about gaggle earlier. Um. And, and I know, you know, our teachers are very well versed in this, um, I'm just, you know, just for the community's knowledge. Um, in terms of those conversations with building, with principals and teachers. Um, are we addressing how to look for signs of child abuse or things of that nature that, uh? I know, I don't, not to pile more onto our teachers already in, in this, in this virtual world, but. Um, how we prepare them with tools to, to look for that type of signs or especially with our younger students, not so much the high school students, because I think. Um, they're a little bit older, maybe able to communicate more and reach out to a school counselor about something they may be encountering, but what about for our younger students? Um, at the elementary level, maybe?
I know, I train my staff on it every year. And it's a lot of, it's ongoing conversation, so usually if a student is having, um, they're being mistreated in some way. We're not going to see it in just one section, it's not just going to be that they're struggling with coming to Zooms, we're going to see it in their work, we're going to, I mean, we're seeing it so many ways. So when we're also the, um. The academic coordinator for our elementary kids too. So we have, we're in charge of INS and five oh four, so we have regular meetings with the teachers and we just have working relationships with all the teachers. So, um, but yes, I specifically talk about it in the beginning of the school year.
That's great.
Absolutely, because it is important. The teachers are amazing and they're on it.
Yeah.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad we're preparing them and, and giving them those tools, so thank you. And just thank you for everything in this presentation, it was really helpful, so thank you.
Um, Ms. Tunnygliff.
Thanks, Mr. Alper. Um, thank you all for a wonderful presentation, it really helps, um. Crystallize what's going on on a day-to-day basis in all of our schools with all of you, so I really do appreciate it. Um, just to kind of piggyback off of what Ms. Merklinger said about gaggle. Uh, do we have, and I don't know if this is more for Dr. Cascone, but is there sort of a feedback loop closure that once we get this information? Is it then pushed out to our counselors and then the counselors reach out? What does that look like? Um. You know, that's kind of my, that's my first question. Um.
What? Do. Okay.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take a first run at, I'll take a first run at it, uh, Ms. Butler. Um, and then you could probably ta- give a little bit of a deeper dive into. Once it kind of gets into the counselor's hands, because I don't really, I only see it really up, up to that point. Um, so, um, you know, gaggle has, um, a team of, of trained professionals who. Um, who are, who are monitoring the, uh, there's an out, there's, the program works on an algorithm based upon, um, keywords. Um, and based upon the content, um, their team, which are, and their team is, are trained, uh, mental health practitioners. Um, will then, you know, there's a determination as to whether it is just simply an email notification. And if it's an email notification, it gets sent to a number of people, I'm on that email. Uh, Mr. Santiago is on that email, just as the director of technology, it goes to our school resource sergeant, uh, school resource officer Sergeant Diaz, it goes to the principal and the assistant principal of the high school. Or whichever school it comes from. And Ms. Butler, are you on that email as well?
No.
You're not, um, but then I, I imagine at that point, once it goes to either the principal or assistant principal, they begin to look into it. And I think that's probably where Ms. Butler could probably shed some light on the process.
What happens is, is once, uh, the building principal gets the information, whatever that information is, it's, it's shared with the school counselors or student assistant counselors. At the high school, it's generally the student assistant counselor. A- and/or the, um, school counselor. At the middle school, it's generally going to be, um, that school counselor. The information is shared with them, once the information is shared, we follow the, the process and procedure of contacting the student, contacting the parent. Um, contacting DIFIS in some instances, contacting, um, the police in some instances to do a wellness check. It depends on the information that we get. From gaggle, where we make a determination as a team at the, at the particular school, how to proceed with that information. Um. Once we, um, make that determination at, at the school level as a team, then, um, you know, we proceed from there. So it depends, it depends on the information, sometimes it's, it's just a, a wellness check or check-in with the student. Um, sometimes it could be checking in with the student and the parent. Um, and then there's, uh, times where we have reached out to the police.
And that's in, in a timely enough basis that what happens in an emergency, does the m- mental health person at gaggle then contact the police department if it's an imminent?
Yeah, yeah, so if it's, so if it's, if it's, um, and we have received, um, I've received two calls. Um, since we started using it, and that's if it's deemed at a level where the nature of the, of, of the, of the, the sentiment. Um, is such that it, um. As far as their, their assessment is that it, it could necessitate immediate action, then it goes to a phone call and it goes in, in order. Um, I'm the first call and then it goes down the line. And would ultimately end up at the police if, for what, if, for whatever reason it was, you know, in the middle of the night on a weekend. And, you know, um, it would ultimately go to the police, um, to go to the house or let the parents know.
Okay, thank you.
And if it does happen during a time where, uh, school is not in session and we were not that, um. Say initial contact, say the police were contacted, the information is, uh, provided to the school. So that we could then follow up with the student or the family, how, you know, depending on the situation, there is follow-up.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Um. Ms. Butler, you also mentioned about, um, assessments, can you talk a little bit about what kind of assessments you're doing right now? Are they mostly academic or bringing in child study team, are there mental health assessments, if you could sort of give a little?
I, I, I can speak on, um, uh, when we're talking about mental health. Issues or concerns, uh, the, the, uh, school councils as well as the SACS, because it's not only at the. Um, high school level or the middle school level, it could be at the elementary level. We have a process that we do follow for, um, uh, ment- We have a process that we do follow for um uh mental assessment. Um it's a a form in essence that has specific questions that we ask the student. Um and that's that mental assessment. If it's um if it's a a student who has an IEP, we do involve the child study team members so that they are part of that assessment. Once the assessment um takes place, uh then a determination is made um how we will proceed. Uh can we support that student with the resources that we have available within the district? Or will we find it necessary to refer the student out to um another uh uh facility or or placement where um additional of support can be provided to the student?
And what are you seeing now, given the pandemic? Are you having? Are you seeing a lot more, a lot less, because we're at home and you're not seeing the kids regularly? What kind of uh? You know, how how is it looking on a kind of?
I would say I I can't say that it's um a a lot more, I mean, more assessments that we're doing. But we are finding that students and families need more support.
Okay.
Um just because the support is needed doesn't necessarily mean that we have to go through the assessment process to make a determination. So we are, uh there is an outreach for more support to a to the students who are feeling isolated, who are feeling anxious, who are feeling uh sometimes are are depressed because of the their their current situation at home or just dealing with school. So um just providing the supports that are, you know, to those students, you know, identifying their needs and providing those to them. So it's not necessarily um say that formal assessment that we may do to refer a student out, but it is a uh assessment to see where that student is and how we can meet that student uh that students needs.
Well, I'm glad you're all there for students um and able to help them. Um Ms. Ellingham, I think you had talked a little bit about sort of the non-structured part of the day and what they were just the small groups. Are you using the Zoom breakout group groups for that?
No, I have actually invited students via, I believe, Google. Um Google or Zoom, you know, what whenever. Um they accept the invitation, they come in. Um we have done some with uh breakout rooms. What we're finding with the breakout rooms for that lunchtime, for that lunch period, is that by the time we get the different kids in the different groups, that lunch period is basically over. So I have found it actually easier and more beneficial to in to have like five groups, like one each day, but it's a different group and they have the opportunity then to spend almost the whole period. I've been doing this actually since September when they had um like after it was over, like the day was over at twelve or whatever, we would be for an hour. But it make it really does give them a connection in a different way. It's not an academic, you know, collaboration, it's a personal collaboration. And these were groups of students that had requested, you know, the opportunity to to be together to have lunch, because a lot of them had not seen anybody for months. Um you know, they're not really getting together. So this affords them that nice opportunity to do that. And and it's kind of enjoyable. And every once I have to tell you, it's like I'm sitting and I'm just listening, but I'm not really in it. And when they giggle and they chuckle and they laugh and it just, it's like such a nice feeling to know that they're just being kids again. They're not just isolated in their home, you know, with worrying about school or the pandemic or whatever the situation is.
It's a great.
Not enough time.
Yeah, at Redwood, we are using the breakout rooms for um the social meetups. I actually it it took a lot of planning and a lot of conversations with the students, but um my third, fourth and fifth graders actually really look forward to it. Um that you know, the very first meeting, we talked extensively about the rules and the regulations of this privilege of being in these breakout rooms. And what they actually do is they'll come in, we'll do a whole group little activity. And then in the chat, they'll privately let me know if there's someone specifically they want to go into a breakout room with. So it's kind of a nice thing. They'll be able to get in touch um and actually without fail, every time I put them in breakout rooms, um when I pop into any of the boys groups, they're playing video games. And you would think that would be something that they wouldn't want to do virtually, but it's really therapeutic for them. I you know, I've had a few say, no, no, but we're just trying to, we're just trying to share information. We don't have each other's phone numbers. So this has been the first opportunity for a couple of the kids. You know, one was new last year and last year was a really tough time at the elementary level to be new. So for him, this is the first opportunity. He had to exchange gaming information with other students. Um so while it's a little thing, they they get to be unmuted the whole time, which is a really big deal at the elementary level. Um they get to be in breakout rooms with friends. They just get to be kids. Um it almost uh replicates the the lunch table conversations, you know, the things that kind of organically happen when you've got six kids sitting together. And it's really been a pleasure to watch that um take place in in these groups.
Oh, that's fantastic. That sounds.
That was really the purpose of it, is allowing them to have lunch with their friends, you know?
And Ms. Fernandez Perez can probably agree at the high school level, though we don't do like meetup lunch breaks or anything. There are many students that will reach out and say, and they're typically not our freshmen, they're ones that we've known over the years. And they'll say, can we do a group meeting with, you know, blah, 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 blah. You know, they'll name three of their friends and I'll arrange it and I'm there and they're just sitting and giggling and talking and you know, kind of just sharing things about what's been going on. And it's it's nice to see those connections. I have two senior boys that every Friday they meet with me and it often starts out with them asking me questions about their college application or they share their screen. But then it goes to kind of like, well, how was your week? What are you doing? So I think it's even those five, ten minute, fifteen minute connections that is helping everyone kind of get through this in a more supportive and positive way.
That's wonderful. I'm so glad you've all figured out how to how to use the technology to help our students. I'm glad they have you all uh in in on their side. Um I think that let me just look at my notes. Um I think that was it. So for my questions, but thanks again for a great presentation. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Great, thank you. Um liaisons, uh Ms. Ridley and uh Ms. Ellison, do you have anything?
Uh Ms. Austin had to leave. Um and Ms. Ridley is also off because she's taking care of an emergency right now.
Gotcha. Okay.
I'm her school counselor. I was hoping she was gonna say nice things about me now.
And I was hoping to get a chance to say hello because she was my ex-student at Rose Hill.
Well, I'll say nice things. Um I really appreciate this. I think you guys put together a great presentation here. I'm glad to see that we're focusing so much on the you know, emotional aspect for these kids and that, you know, we're staying on top of it as well as we are. You know, I think this is a hard time for everyone and it's good to see this. So thank you very much, Dr. Cascone.
Thank you, Mr. Alper and uh.
Dr. Cascone, you're not muted, but I can't hear you. So if we could just unplug your mic and plug it back in for me. No, I still can't hear you. Yeah, if we can unplug the USB and the universe is against you. You were muted, you you were unmuted, you were ready. Nope, still don't have you. On those headsets, are there buttons for on and off? I don't know which ones you guys are using.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's try that again. Ms. Butler, thank you so much. Our school counselors, uh thank you for your time. I know you you probably need to get some shut eye because you have a a big day ahead of you tomorrow. So uh thank you. Appreciate you. Have a great night. And uh see you around.
Thank you very much for having us. Bye bye now.
Okay, um mo- moving on here, um I'd like to um just briefly introduce uh the next uh presentation, which should be a bit briefer than the last one. Um and that's uh Mr. Mendez is gonna uh is just gonna present some additional details uh as follow up to the correspondence that went home uh last week to elementary parents concerning um the uh the adjustments to the elementary virtual schedule. Um and um the revised report, elementary report card. Um uh which uh will be is in final draft format and is intended for uh use um for the first trimester gr- uh grades, which are um coming to an end uh shortly. Um so Mr. Mendez, would you uh like to take it away?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Um uh kudos to our counseling department, our school counselors. Uh that was a fantastic presentation. I think uh it really coexists with um all of the efforts as they've shared that the teachers um in collaboration with the school counselors are implementing in order to reach all of our students. Um during their presentation, they did share a video that gave you a a small glimpse of the types of activities and things that they do with students. And toward that end, I just want to um uh share with you that on December sixteenth, the curriculum and instruction team will be hosting a town hall. Um where supervisors, directors of each content area for grade six through twelve, we're going to do secondary first, um will also be sharing uh what is actually happening in the classroom, right? Uh there will be um examples from teachers, maybe um some small videos to show you what does this look like? What does virtual instruction look like? It's something that came up at the previous board meeting. Um and so then the curriculum and instruction supervisors and directors for secondary education, grade six through twelve on December sixteenth, beginning at six fifteen PM, um will host a town hall. Um and uh a prelude of that was, uh you know, uh the school counselors video and how they're showcasing, right? What is actually happening between school counselors and students and we'll be showing what's happening between teachers and students. What do breakout rooms look like? What does instruction look like? What do activities look like, et cetera? We'll follow that up with um elementary at a later date. Um and so then with that said, this evening, I'm going to just quickly um go over just key pieces or clarifying pieces, if you will, for the uh elementary schedule. Um so when we're thinking about our elementary schedule and we're resetting it for winter virtual, uh we took a look at the strengths of the elementary schedule. We took a look at the areas for improvement. Um and we did that um one, because we are coming to the close of the first marking period and we really needed to be reflective, look back and say what's been working and what's not. Um second, we are um entering an extension period. We we thought that we would be open by now, November ninth, and we knew that we would be extending this virtual uh period uh for uh for a little bit longer. And therefore we needed to see what were the necessary adjustments that needed to be made for the elementary schedule. And third, as we do prepare for hybrid, because we are preparing and we are preparing to um come back as 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 soon as we are able, uh we wanted to make sure that this end of the trimester marks a clean cut between what we are presently doing and what we will be doing when we are entering into hybrid. So the schedule that was shared um is a transition schedule. That will be our hybrid schedule. We will pivot with this schedule directly into hybrid. So with those three things in mind, uh we um reached out to our elementary staff. We had some really good discussion with our school leaders around what's happening in our classrooms for elementary students K through five. And uh a common thread across all was we really need to prioritize our ELA and math instruction specifically in a prolonged uh virtual model and in preparation for returning to school in a hybrid model uh shortly after the break is the hope, right? And so uh currently, we're teaching ELA only every other day. It's twice a week and math twice a week. And that's really not sufficient. We need our youngest learners to be prepared um for um achieving their standards across the content area. A second big priority was really focusing in on small group instruction. So when we readjusted the schedule, it was not to add time as much as as much as to concentrate the time on ELA and math. And two of the areas that we did add was to focus in on small group instruction versus whole um class instruction and opportunities for intervention. We also received a lot of feedback from our parents regarding the PM-related arts schedule, that it was complex, it was confusing, it was difficult to follow. And so then we simplified that um to a great extent. Uh also PE was being offered, physical education was being offered in the AM asynchronously. So the students never got to really meet with their teachers and do their exercises and or um their physical education. So now it will be asynchronous in the PM. Um and also to improve our cultural and linguistic experience for our students with world language. And so then here is the schedule that was shared. I just want to just go over two or three um uh clarifying points here. Um so there was a homeroom that was added. You'll see that from eight forty-five to eight fifty-five. Again, we have to plan for the transition to hybrid as well, right? So this schedule sticks with the transportation, with the um transition to hybrid. Um this will um pivot right into that schedule. This opportunity for homeroom is to get all of our students on board, um get them prepared for their learning. And what you will see is that ELA and math are now every day. All right, so they're Monday through Thursday, and that's the adjustment. To accomplish that, we move prof- uh physical education into the PM. And we added ten minutes to the AM session. All right, so we added the ten minutes to the AM session and we moved PE to the PM in order to have daily reading, writing and math. All right? Um what uh we also want to um identify here is that because we have ELA and math every day, it does not mean that it will be whole group instruction, direct instruction teacher talking to the student. There is opportunity um in that period for intervention to be had, right? Intervention teachers can push in for those students who need it. Also for small group instruction, those breakout rooms, to be able to uh be facilitated so that teachers could work with students in small groups and students can have an opportunity for independent practice, which is very much needed. Uh in the afternoon, then, what we'll notice is that there are blocks for intervention and or related arts. And I just want to clarify that while this looks like an extension to the day, it doesn't mean that every student uh would be um participating in all of those blocks. Generally, the students have related arts for one day a week, max two times a week, right? Um they get all their related arts done in those periods. And then the other days, uh they're not in session for the full day. So that's just a clarifying point. When we look at this schedule, it appears that the students are in until three twenty every single day, Monday through Thursday. And that's not the case. It's where they have related arts, where it applies to them or where they have intervention. So it is differentiated toward that end. So if a student does not have intervention blocks and is not in um a a title one or a basic skills program, they would not be scheduled into those afternoon blocks. And then our Fridays um remain as is. Um they are very critical. Fridays are very critical to our um OT, our PT, our related services, instruments, gifted and talented, our intervention takes place on Fridays. Our um all of our services, um it's a hub model there on the Friday, so we needed to keep that intact. All right, so that's just an overview of the elementary schedule. Um I do want to say that now with PE in the afternoon and all of the other related arts, they will be synchronous. So for those of us who are wondering, well, is my child going to just be watching videos on the screen? No, now the physical education will be synchronous. The teacher will be present thirty ti- uh thirty minutes one time a week. And then the other week, it would be the asynchronous. But you will now have, students will now have a time with the teacher where they're working through their physical education and will be meeting uh the requirement to have the PE there twice a week. So that's um the elementary schedule. I'll pause there to see if there are any questions um regarding the schedule before I move on to the report card.
For members, any questions on the uh scheduling, Mr. Rothstein?
Uh yeah, just uh i- in the in the PM part of the day, physical education, does that fall under related arts?
It will fall under that schedule. PE, however, is a state requirement. So it's not um like an art, music, uh a library, that's not a state requirement. PE is a state requirement, but it is being held in the PM, in the related arts schedule, yes.
Got it. And and that will be, just to repeat, I think what you said is um synchronous one day a week and asynchronous one day a week?
Yes.
For a total of two days a week of phys ed?
Correct, and that would meet our state requirement, correct.
Okay, thank you.
That actually was my question. Thank you, Mr. Rothstein.
Um so if I'm understanding this, I I guess I still don't understand about Fridays um and why we're not moving to five days a week. and why we're not moving to five days a week. Because at the end of the day, school is five days a week, right? Monday through Friday. And when students, when pandemic is, you know, fingers crossed over and the vaccine's available and we're back in school, my assumption is we're going back five days a week. I understand the concerns about screen time and things of that nature. But, and I'm not sure what the percentage of students that we have that are in gifted and talented or some of the other courses that are taking place on Fridays, but it still sounds like the majority of our elementary students will be done with school by 9:15, 9:30, it seems like, if they don't have independent work, if they don't have homework, if they don't have music. So my concern is that our students on Fridays are still going to be done. You know, and, and it's a joke among some of the, the kids that I know in town of who can be done the quickest, who can be done with all their work by 10 AM. And I don't say that to be funny, it's just, you know, these are the things that kids are seeing and, oh, I'm going to be done by 10 o'clock, now what do I do with the rest of my day? And I'm just curious, you know, why we haven't decided to go to five days a week like some of our neighboring school districts?
Yeah, I think that's a very good point and a very large misconception out there that Fridays, no instruction is taking place. All classes are taking place on Fridays. All students have all classes on Fridays. They're just asynchronous. And so then students do have instruction that's asynchronous. They do have lessons, they do have homework that is on Fridays. In addition to their asynchronous instruction, what we're unable to do virtually that we are able to do in school, brick and mortar, is pull students for services, provide intervention and all of the other things that take place on Fridays. So what we've done is we've built a schedule that accommodates what would normally take place during the day in a schedule, and we've placed it on a Friday so that we could maximize our human resources. So while students may be present in school from, you know, 9 AM to 3:20 PM, I think it's a misunderstanding to think that they're sitting in their classes that whole time, right? Just receiving pure core content. They are being pulled from their classes to receive related, related services, to receive GNT, to receive instrumental instruction, to receive gifted and talented, to receive basic skills and a whole other plethora of services. What we've done is instead of having them pulled during the Monday through Thursday out of their content area, since it's already compacted, we've just pulled all services to Friday. Again, what that allows us to do is to protect the instructional block. We protect math, ELA, science and social studies, because now we're not pulling kids for services Monday through Thursday on random schedules, right? We're only pulling them from Fridays and we are able to secure that they are in their content area blocks for the duration of the day. Also, when we're thinking about coming back, our hybrid schedule, we have it planned to stay as is. So the schedule will remain Monday through Thursday, synchronous instruction with their teachers on the dual, right? Where they'll get the, the instruction virtually or through the stream. And then Fridays, we will continue with the services. I think it's critical to keep our services in play. We just heard a beautiful presentation from our school counselors on all of the services that take place. School counseling is one of the many. And Fridays is really where we're leveraging all of those services. What we've done, therefore, with adjusting this schedule is said, given that we're not creating a fifth day of instruction, we're making sure that our blocks are long enough, not just for length and not just for whole instru- whole group instruction or minutes, right? But that they're comprehensive enough where we can then offer the content, offer small group instruction and offer intervention within one block. A, a great need that we've recognized is that in the PM, there are differing schedules at home. And while we offer intervention in the PM, some parents and homes are unable to tap into the intervention in the PM, whether it be a schedule, whether it be conflict, whether it be a work situation, whatever the situation is. But we need our students. You know, as a school counselor said, as Mr. Rothstein quoted, right? Said they need to be in school and we recognize that, they need to be in school. And while we might not have them in the PM consistently, we certainly have them in the AM. And therefore, we've built intervention now into that AM for any student who can't come to the PM or who we can't catch, right? For whatever reason, they're our captive audience in the AM and they're going to be pulled in for intervention during that ELA or math block. So we are securing and protecting the instructional day. And, and we're doing that by maximizing the Monday through Thursday and securing those intervention services for the Fridays.
Okay, so I, I appreciate that, but I'm still not following because, like I said, so if, if I'm reading this correctly, we're doing, so the, the Friday asynchronous, a teacher is not, it's, they're not logging in and working with their teacher directly, correct?
Not video, but a stu- a teacher's posting all of the assignments and the homework.
Right, right. So if I have an overachieving student or a student who basically wants to sleep in on Friday morning, they're going to check in at 8:45 for homeroom. And maybe the night before they went in and did all of their homework, literally at 9:15, they're done. If that's, if I'm understanding, the homework assignments are posted, student goes in and does them or has to turn them in by a certain specific time, is from what I understand. The intervention, small group work, is the same thing that's being done in the afternoon during the week? Is it not?
I, I think that-
Because it's, I, I guess because I'm looking at this virtual schedule document and it's the same exact thing for each thing. So it says related arts, intervention, small groups, independent work, homework. And then it says the same thing on Fridays, intervention, small group, independent work, homework. So I'm just trying to understand what the difference is between the two. Because I, a lot of parents are concerned that Fridays are, for your average student who's not receiving any additional services, who's not, you know, meeting with the student ca- guidance counselor, who's not in gifted and talented, who's not in AP classes or honors classes. For your average general ed student who is not involved in anything else, it seems and does have the appearance to many parents that their kids, and they're experiencing it, right? They're seeing their students are not having any work after 9:15. Maybe the most, 10, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, depending on how much work has been assigned through the asynchronous assignments. But they're not getting that, you know, if they're not in any of these specialized groups, they're not getting that personal one-to, you know, touch with their teacher on Fridays. So it does seem like four days a week with the content with their teachers and then Fridays, it's on their own. And depending on how quickly they get through those assignments. Now, that's not to say that our students that are in honors classes, gifted and talented, you know, any of the other specialized groups, aren't experiencing Friday differently. I, I absolutely understand that and appreciate that. And that's why I asked, I'm not sure what the percentage is. And if someone could provide that, what the percentage of students that are not involved in anything that's noted for Friday's asynchronous learnings, that I would be curious to know. Because I think that would help change the perception, maybe, right? So, but if 60%, 70% of our students aren't involved in any of these, then I have to question why Friday is asynchronous still.
Ms. Mendez, Ms. Mendez? If you, if you'll, I'll take, you know, just kind of jump in here. So I, I think, I think it's, it's, it's important for us to distinguish between level. Because I think we're conflating experiences between maybe high school and elementary school. So let's, let's just, let's put high school and middle school aside for a moment because we're talking about the elementary schedule. And I, and I would like to just call attention to the fact that, you know, we, we did administer a survey to parents. We had approximately some, somewhere around a little over 700. I think it was about 715 elementary families responded to the survey. So I had somewhere in the neighborhood of about 3%, 30% of our elementary parents responded. And that, those survey results helped inform. Now, what, what informs decision-making in a school district? How, how does, how does a superintendent ultimately make a decision to recommend to the board? How does an administrative team, how does a group of trained educational professionals make decisions about what to do? Well, certainly parental feedback is, is a piece to that. But of course, we know that in this and in these times, there's a tremendous array and variety of parental perspectives and experiences, right? So I think we full well know that regardless of what we come up with, we're never going to have a schedule that, that, that meets with equal satisfaction of all people. So then what becomes our goal? Well, our goal becomes trying to find a, a solution that represents the best possible compromise for that wide range of parental feedback, as well as what we believe as trained educational professionals based upon what we're seeing and experiencing. So what teachers are experiencing, what principals are experiencing, what guidance counselors are saying. And so when we looked at the survey results, what we found was is that before we disaggregated by grade, simply by virtue of the question of how parents felt about the school day. Was it, and was it just right? Was it too, too packed with time or was it too light? And what we found before disaggregating for grade level, we found that approximately 65% of the parents responded that they felt it was just right. Another 20 some odd percent felt that it was really packed. And about 10.5% felt the day was light. When we disaggregated, because, you know, in, with the parent that I was kind of, you know, kind of communicating with on email, raised a good point, said, well, you know, what, what if you controlled for grade level? Like, for example, for the lower grades, where ostensibly those, those children might need more support from the parents and therefore it would be helpful if they were more engaged live on Fridays. So when we teased out and disaggregated by grade level for kindergarten and first grade, we saw some movement, not in the just right number. The just right number stayed actually right around 65 to 67%. Almost seven out of 10 parents responded that they felt it was just right. That packed number decreased by about 10%. You had 10% slightly more families that responded they felt it was light. So even with kindergarten and first grade, we found that it was around 19.7 and 22%. I mean, it's not a, 22% is not a small number, but it's, I, I think it's still largely skewed towards a percentage of parents. So, you know, if we were to then move in a pendulum swing in the opposite direction, then we would take the seven out of 10 parents that felt that it was just right and now they feel that it's too much. So we're always trying to maintain that balancing act. But in the end, that's where we as educational professionals come in and say, do we feel that these qualitative changes to the schedule are going to solve the fundamental, the fundamental mission of what we're trying to do here? Which is to effectively educate our children. You know, concerned, children are falling behind. Okay, so let's, this is a hypothesis. It's a global hypothesis relative to all stu- students are falling, falling behind. And then it can be on a more micro level or say, you know, my child's falling behind. Okay, these are hypotheses. Now, on the individual level, and I've said this many, many times to parents, and as I said, if you feel that your child is being underserviced by this schedule, they're falling behind, they're regressing. You know, we, we're, you know, if, if we haven't delivered that feedback to you, and by the way, and I've said this to our team, if now we're at the end of the first marking period, at the end of the first trimester, we need to be looking at grades and understanding which students may be falling behind and regressing. And we should not be waiting for parents to reach out to us and say, I think my child's falling behind. No, we need to be proactive in reaching out to those parents that we're concerned about what we saw in the first marking period. Here's what we're suggesting from an intervention plan, from a support plan. We're committed in the short term, even while we're virtual, to bridging that gap. And if we're not able to completely bridge that gap before we get back in brick and mortar, then once we get back in brick and mortar, bet your bottom dollar that this school district is going to do everything in its power to make sure that your child is brought back up to speed in as quick a fashion as possible. That's what I say, that's the message, right? Because, because we know, like, no different than we're in brick and mortar, this virtual schedule is never going to be a panacea to all people, but we try and find that balance. And so that's just a few thoughts. We were being guided by the data in the survey. Now, we did put out final point, because we got into the high school a little bit. We have recently put out a survey, six through 12. And meeting with principals tomorrow, we'll be looking at that data to understand what, what that data is saying. Because remember, we paused that high school schedule change, but that doesn't mean that there isn't going to be change. But we want to have that be informed by what we're seeing come out of school. And a final point, even though I said that was my final point, you know how I do it. It's never really my final point, Mr. Alper, they just keep going on, but I promise, because it's 9:35, is I, I think someone said something to me the other day, which really resonated. Which is, you know, the typical manner in which we, we, we conduct high school when we're in brick and mortar is paradoxically very unlike the college experience for students who, who end up going to college, you know, going away to college. It's very unlike the college experience. In fact, it barely resembles the college experience. And in fact, it's actually one of the reasons why I think a lot of students, once they go to college, don't meet with success, because their time is so structured, it's so scheduled, it's so routinized. There's people hanging over them all the time. That when now they're, they have class two days a week instead of five days a week and they can go to the library, they can go to the quad and throw the frisbee around, you know, they, they, they don't have, so I would argue that if you have a student that says, hey, you know what? By golly, you know, I'm, I'm actually gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay up late and work on my asynchronous work. And I'd rather get my asynchronous work done late on a Thursday night and actually get some additional sleep or catch up on X, Y and Z on a Friday. My take on it is, is like, we do that all time in the workforce. We, we, we schedule our time flexibly in our, and when we work best to try and rearrange our priorities in our life. So we may be inadvertently actually building and creating some degree of life skill later in college through this. Now, I'm not suggesting that there isn't value and I'm not trying to get back, but there may be some inadvertent benefits to our kids relative to life strategies that'll actually help them when they get to college. So anyway, I promise, that is my final point.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I appreciate that, but, and, and, you know, I, I can certainly understand and agree with some of the points that you made. But I think at the end of the day, you know, parents are looking for the accountability, right? So at the end of the day, surveys, and I think you said there were 700. I think just two elementary schools alone isn't even 700, I think. You know, and we have seven elementary schools. So, you know, I, I, not to say that the data doesn't support, you know, you can, you can bring a horse to water, but you can't make a drink. So we can certainly put out a number of surveys, make a ton of phone calls and the parents that are going to respond are going to. And the ones who kind of have lost faith, to be honest, I think are just at the point where they're not going to fill out surveys anymore. And that's not anything against us as a district. I think it's just, you know, parents are, you know, working from home, there's a lot of stress. And so it's like, this is one more thing I have to fill out. Uh, like, it's going to be whatever the school district decides to do and my voice isn't going to be heard. And I, I would like to kind of just address that and maybe Dr. Casco, and you can speak a little bit to it, that we are hearing what everyone is saying. And to your point about the data points, so we do, I think, need folks to complete those surveys. So we do have a better picture of what is going on versus just anecdotal stories and, and of what experiences parents are, are seeing with their students. But, you know, I still have the concern, though, for, for our elementary students, you know, while at, at college level, yes, they are going to, you know, have a little bit more flexibility in their days, depending on what kind of a student they are. The structured routine, you know, and I, and I meant to ask this earlier of our guidance counselors, what are we doing in terms of time management, skill sets for our students? It's great that we're focusing on mental health and the social, emotional pieces of it, but are we doing anything around time management? Because I think that's where we may be struggling as a district for our students, where those students that are feeling overwhelmed, may, you know, it may be a matter of time management. So I would just offer that up and to really, you know, as we go into this, I would really be curious to see, and I think we're going to get into the, the grades in a minute, what, you know, what that impact is and what those data points look like. So I guess more to come.
All right, Ms. Tonicliff?
Sorry, I think I just, my notes fell off my desk. Let me see. I think what I was looking for is, is there a schedule for that related arts section of what that's going to look like? I think that would really help out the parents who are looking for that. And can you give a little color to that, what that 140 to 210 period is going to look like? And also the 1 o'clock to, to 1:30 sections? Sure. Might be broken out for a student. Thanks.
I can attempt to explain it. Before, what we had was the PM schedule, there were three blocks. And students could have their related arts on any one of those blocks on one day. Now, what we've done to simplify that, because it was very confusing, it's now by homeroom. So whoever the homeroom teacher is, the students will follow their homeroom into their related arts classes. So, for example, I may be in Ms. Tonicliff's homeroom and my homeroom goes to related arts on Mondays. And on Mondays, I have my art in my music and my library. And I may have my PE on a Tuesday, right? But I'm going to be now with my homeroom in my related arts. So I think we've closed a lot of concerns there. One, we've simplified the schedule. Two, the students are now in their related arts with their homeroom in the afternoon.
Okay.
Does that answer that?
Yeah, it does, thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to picture how that was going to- Yeah, it does. Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to picture how that was gonna um, play out. And so, and that answered my other question, it was about how they were broken out. And now they're by homeroom. So that's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Right, um, for, for grades four and five are the blocks, the block one, the block two, the block three, are those uh, who, who's structuring those? Is that the individual classroom preference? Or is it being done by grade level per building?
It's a grade level and also depending on the model. So um, it's departmentalized in grades four, five. So some schools are on a three-teacher model. Some schools are on a four-teacher model, so that depends. That's why we've named them blocks and just given a sample. But you may have a teacher who's dedicated to ELA only, a teacher who's dedicated to math only, and then a teacher who's dedicated to social studies, science, for example. Or an ELA, social studies, math, science combination, right? So those blocks are held for whatever that rotation looks like in that grade level and at that school, depending on what the staffing configuration is.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. Uh, that's all I've got on the schedule.
Stendis, to move on to the report card.
Sure. Um, so I'm going to reshare my screen. And so um, here we are now, uh, talking about the elementary report card. Let me just go back. I think the first thing that we uh, really have to consider as we're um, thinking about our instructional program is alignment. Uh, and this is critical. And, and because we're presenting the elementary report card today, by no means does this mean that the work began, um, you know, in this virtual environment. You know, this has been ongoing for a good uh, three to four years where the district has been attempting to move into a standard space, uh, report card alongside uh, all of the other districts, right? The majority of the districts at this point are all in standard space report cards. It's, it's not something that's new. It has taken some time to get off the grounds in West Orange. And I think um, when we reflect back on our current report card, it's about ten years old. The report card, and, and given that, if you can just consider how many changes have taken place with the standards, how they've been updated, how we are assessing now, which is not the same way we were assessing before, uh, how we're teaching now, we're teaching to standards in our classrooms. And so then the pedagogy really is um, to assess what you're teaching, right? So if we're teaching to standards, we should be assessing the standards, right? Uh, and if we're assessing the standards, then we should be grading in a way that is considering mastery of standards, progress towards standards. And then we should be reporting that way. And right now, um, we don't have alignment across those four areas, instruction, assessment, grading, and reporting, right? Our current report card at the elementary level is again, uh, over ten years old. While we've done some tweaking in the past, it certainly hasn't come to a place where we're actually reporting out on what we're assessing. Also, a second critical piece is that we needed to find consistency across the grade levels, the schools, the classrooms, right? What is um, a meeting standards in uh, Ms. Dendes's class should equal what meeting standards looks like in Ms. Tonic class, Tonic Cliff's class? And that should equal what meeting standards looks like in Mr. Alper's class, right? We need to have consistency across the schools um, in, in our grading and in our reporting. So this report card seeks to find alignment across our instructional program. We did, at the end of last year, start to shift toward a standard space report card. So if you recall, third trimester last year, we did close the year with a, a movement towards standard space. It was light because we were in emergency virtual, right? But you did see the shift in the key already that we implemented last year. You did see a shift in now beginning to focus on the domain areas. And you'll see a shift in our reporting to align to how parents are used to getting reported out as it relates to standards on assessments. So making clear connections between standards, assessment, grading, and reporting that are aligned to standards-based content that's actually being taught and assessed will allow us to provide consistent and concise reporting across our classrooms and our schools. Our key is alignment, right? The purpose of standards-based grading and reporting is so that we can clearly communicate student progress toward achieving standards, right? Our parents really need to know, how is my child doing? And reading is a very broad topic. So what about reading? Are they, um, you know, are they progressing towards specifically, what about reading? And um, in all uh, fairness to the standards, it has to move beyond, your child is doing great in my class. You know, they're participating, they behave well, right? We have to move past that and hit right into the standard to communicate to the parent, this is what your child is doing well, this is where your child needs some support, and this is where your child is not meeting the standard, right? It needs to be very clear to the parent in that reporting, so that the parent can then take that report card plus teacher comment and progress throughout the marking period to say, well, then this is how I can help my child at home. Or this is the area in which my child is getting um, instruction and focus in their content area. The standard space report card aligns the grading with the outcomes. So this is what we're teaching, and so then the grading should assess what we're teaching. And again, that's all standard space and it's at the grade level. So here is an example of our prior grade one report card, right? So it'll say they're participating in group instruction, they're using appropriate volume, they're answering questions correctly about books read aloud, and a lot of things around spelling. They write neatly. This is our current report card. It does not represent the standards, right? They use punctuation skills correctly. While we incorporate all of these things, it's certainly not what's being assessed in the classroom. It's not how we're assessing in the classroom, and it's not what's being assessed on state assessments. So we're shifting from this very general language that really, you know, um, could, could be helped along, a lot along the way, so that a parent knows how to assist and support their student and knows what's being assessed in the classroom. And we're shifting to the standards. They're reading at grade level. They're retelling stories and identifying main topics with key details. They're asking and answering questions about key details in a text, right? So this is how we're teaching, this is what's in our curriculum, these are the standards. This is how we're assessing, and therefore, we need to report out all of these things within an aligned instructional system. Uh, another example in social studies, our current report card for social studies demonstrates an understanding of historic and civic-related concepts, participates in class, completes class homework on time. I think we need to do better by our students, right? We need to be able to report exactly what it is that they're learning in social studies. And here we're moving to the actual standard. Developing knowledge and skills how to, to analyze how past and present interactions of people, cultures, and the environment shape American history. That's what we're teaching. That's what's being assessed, and that's what we need to report on, right? Or developing the knowledge and skills to think analytically when using social studies resources. Very different than participating in class or completing homework on time or just uh, using or interpreting maps, globes, right? Which is a very skill-based uh, uh, place to be within instruction. So here's the shift that you see. We're moving from a very generalized dated report card to a standard space report card that aligns to the New Jersey student learning standards. When we're thinking about grading and reporting, again, aligning our system, we need to think about what are the expected learning outcomes? What is the common rubric language that teachers use when grading, so that we achieve the consistency? And then how do we follow the progressions of the standards? Meaning, what do I need to know by the end of trimester one? What do I need to know by the end of trimester two? And what do I need to know by the end of trimester three? Here, we add depth to the report card, we add depth to the reporting, and we let parents know, again, clearly communicating, that's the purpose of the report card, to clearly communicate how students are doing as it relates to the standards. And we're able to do that by trimester now. We're able to say, by the end of trimester one, students should be able to do this. And by the end of trimester two, students should be able to do this. If not, it's kept very general and throughout a whole year, then where is the progression or the growth? And so then, uh, when we're thinking about standards-based grading and reporting, student progress toward meeting the standards is measured by a consistent application of common grading criteria, right? All teachers using the same criteria to grade the students so that we could have confidence that regardless of the class or the school in which a student exited from, that that grade is the same across the, the schools and the classes. Um, and a common feature of the standard space reporting is instead of letter grades, student receive grades that show how well they've mastered the grade level standards. Now, this is the key feature of a standard space report card, not unique to West Orange. Why is that critical? Because the traditional approach says, I'm going to give you a writing assignment. I'm going to give you a numerical grade, you got a ninety-seven percent. But we don't grade like that anymore. It's been years since we've graded like that. We give rubrics. We use the holistic writing rubric. It's on a six-point rubric, right? We use rubrics to grade, so we need to align based on our, uh, the way we grade, the way we assess in our classrooms. Moving away from this formulaic number percentage at the elementary especially moves us out of that subjectivity, right? What is a ninety-seven, or what is a ninety-one, or what is an eighty? To, which is not how elementary really scores at this point, right? Again, we're in holistic, we're in rubrics, we're in standards-based assessment. To, how is a student meeting the standard? How are they um, uh, approaching the standard? Or how are they developing in that standard? You will see the same language on our state assessments, right? It's the same kind of construct. So again, aligning the entire system. So in this report card, similar to when we exited at the end of last year, we already introduced this rubric. It says that we're meeting standards, approaching standards, or developing. There are instances where a standard is not applicable. For example, we may have a student with an IEP who is not assessed on a specific standard, if they're an autistic student, for example, or an ESL student who has not yet acquired any English. That standard might not be applicable to that student, and that's where that NA would apply. But here are um, the features of a typical standard space report card, right? Needs approaches or developing. Now, what you don't see here is exceeding. We are discussing that right now, and we're thinking about if we want to add exceeding to the report card. It will be featured in all of the comments, and you will see teachers placing that there. But it is something that we're considering to add to the key here. And so then, um, if we do, then it would be exceeding, meeting, approaching, and developing. Or it would stay um, as is. So here is the standard. Now, what you do see in this language is e-learning experience. As we move out of virtual, we'll remove e-learning experience. This report card will be tweaked, but we need to again, be fair to our students and represent and report the fact that these grades are being presented in a virtual environment. So again, e-learning experiences for this trimester, if we're out of e-learning, you know, next year, I would assume so, right, or very shortly, then we'll remove that from the report card and we can tweak it. And then the last thing that I would share is that every teacher has a workbook, if you will. And in that workbook, for every single standard, they will have a rubric of what does meeting stand, meeting the standard look like? So this is math, measuring and estimating lengths in standard units is the first one in this example. For trimester one, it's not assessed. So this is in the teacher's workbook. All teachers have this. Trimester two, what does meeting standards look like? It looks like consistently measuring the length of an object in inches and cent, cent, um, centimeters. But by trimester three, the standard progresses. And so now, by trimester three, meeting standards looks like consistently measuring the length of an object by selecting and using appropriate tools such as rulers, yardsticks, meter sticks, and measuring tape. By using this rubric, now we know and we can um, ensure that a meeting is the same across all of the students in this grade five example for this very specific standard. What you'll also notice here is the grayed out areas, wherever there's gray, that means that that's not assessed in that marking period. It will appear on the report card for the parent, which is also a good communication point. So the parent doesn't wonder, well, why didn't they get a grade first trimester? But now they have one this, it's because it wasn't assessed in that trimester, because the standards don't call for it. So again, our purpose is to clearly communicate how students are progressing toward the standards and to do so within an aligned instructional framework. That includes our instruction, our assessment, our grading, and our reporting. Lastly, um, big excitement for us, we're moving the report cards out of Google Docs and these sixteen-page things that took forever to print and send home. And now they'll be available to parents in the parent portal the very day that report cards are available. So for this trimester, it's December twenty-first. So on December twenty-first, parents will be able to log right into their parent portal. They'll be able to see their students' report card to include teacher comments and translations, yay, right? So the report card will be available in English, Spanish, and Creole. We've translated it all, we've put it into Power School. So teachers will provide comments for all core content areas, math, ELA, sciences, social studies. Not for the related arts unless it's necessary and unless the teacher finds something that they really need to say, because those teachers have upwards of a hundred students each, right? So, but teachers will provide comments for all the core content areas. Teachers will provide comments for work, study, and behavior character development. Before, that was in the report card, but we've removed behavior from the report card. We don't believe that it belongs there. We believe the standards belong there. And we've um, embedded work, study, behavior, character development into the comments. Again, the translations have been populated into Power School. That's huge. ESL now has its own report card. That's huge, right? Before, it was just the progress report. Parents will have instant access to, through the portal also, uh, to the archives. So they'll be able to see the trimester stack up against each other. And of course, for our parents, we know who they are, who are unable to access the parent portal. We will provide those hard, hard copies for them. Just the word about uh, our process, uh, again, this didn't begin here. This has been a, a few years in the making. However, we did go through the feedback for the past few years of all of those committees that were working toward this end. We did bring this report card through every teacher, uh, K through five. We have a hundred percent of our teachers, a hundred percent, not ninety-nine, who wanted to go through the standard space report card, who agreed that this was really a, a great measurement of what they actually teach. And I think that was the uh, concern in the prior report or in the current, right? That it, it does not represent any longer, ten years later, what we currently teach. Most of their feedback that they gave, and they, we did have a window of feedback for them to, for us to make edits, was really about the work, study, the behavior, um, some of the standards. We cleaned up some of the language that they felt was not as clear, what was meeting, what was um, approaching, right? So we cleaned up some of that language. We parsed out, again, the progression from trimester one to two to three. Teachers are able to uh, log in, they're able to in two clicks, get to their report card. They're able to put in their grades, they're able to give comments free. They can type them in, or they can choose from a comment bank. Or they could create their own comment bank and then just use the comments that they most frequently use. But uh, here, I think we, we have accomplished multiple purposes, really in alignment to our system. We've um, accomplished really reporting accurately on what it is that we're teaching to and assessing. Uh, and I think we've simplified the process for uh, reporting to parents and giving them instant access. And I think that would be it. So if you have any questions.
All right, let's go ahead, Mr. Rothstein.
Wow, again, so many uh, great presentations tonight. So this is actually really exciting, uh, the changes, and thank you for walking us through those. The side-by-side comparison of what the report card looked like previously and what the new report card looks like right now. That in and of itself, I'd like to see, you know, a thirty or forty-minute presentation on that in more detail and the thought processes that went into it. But just, I, I know it's late to, to do this as quickly as I can. The um, focusing the, the assessment itself on the standards-based education, forcing or reinforcing the use of rubrics, the introduction of the translations. These are just, these are huge improvements. And I can see how this can help a parent so much better than, I know when my parents in elementary school just got the time after time after time, C minus, talks too much. That didn't help too much, you know, them figuring out how to help me be a better student. That didn't help too much, you know, them figuring out how to help me be a better student. Um, uh, these really seem designed to make a, a big difference. So, uh, hopefully these will, uh, these will be great for. Our students and our families and, and our educators. Um, at the risk of opening a can of worms, uh, the idea of exceeding, uh, i- is that? Is that something that's in discussion and might be introduced sometime soon? Or is it sort of, there's an awareness of it being an issue and maybe at some point in the, in the distant future, we'll come around to it?
There's an awareness that, um, a, a, a group of parents and where students may like to see the exceeding on the report card. Specifically, parents who, um, are, um, um. Working toward the honors bend, right? The AP, those conversations, selection for programs and things like that. Um, exceeding is something that if we, uh, continue to receive feedback around, uh, we're able to move in that direction within two days. Uh, it's not something that would require us to wait another trimester. We would just need to make a decision around that now. We've gotten a little bit of feedback around it, not too much, um, you know, one or two emails around, around that, um, and, and that's it. So if it's something that rises to, um, a, a great concern across our, our, our parent population. Or of course, our student population, it's certainly something that we can add. And if it's something that rose to the occasion right now, it's something we can accomplish this trimester.
And I would imagine the faculty too might have an opinion on whether that's beneficial or not. So I, I get that it's a complex issue.
Let them know. Right now, the faculty was very, very good with, um, the key that we have now, needs, approaches and developing.
Interesting to note. Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Is trick scales.
Uh, congratulations. I, I know what that's like, um, going through that process. And you said three or four years and I know that many of the surrounding districts moved to the standards-based assessment years ago. So I'm really happy to see that, um, we are joining the, uh, the crowd. Not that it matters, but I vote for the exceeding. I just think that for students who are really. Um, giving the extra effort and going the extra mile should be acknowledged for it. Uh, so that's just my vote. As I said, I know it doesn't matter, but I'm throwing it out there just in case. Um, what I especially like is that teacher's workbook and the consistency in grading. Because we know, um, that a meets. Or let's go back and say that an A was not always an A in everybody's class. You know, I've heard teachers say over the years, no one in my class gets an A. Um, so this takes all of that out, that, that takes all of that subjectivity out and it really makes it objective. And we can really see where students are performing and where they have weaknesses and where we need to apply additional resources and instruction. Um, the ELL report card, when is that going to be ready? I'd love to see that at some point.
It's ready. It's done. Um, it's in Power School. I can share that with the board. Um, it's done. It's the. It's same as we've done with the, um, this report card here. So. This report card here in total, this is what it looks like, two pages versus sixteen. And the ELL report card does the same thing with the WEDA standards. So it wraps itself around.
Right.
The WEDA standards of instruction, um, but I can go ahead and forward that to the board. We already have it in Power School and we're ready to go with it as well.
Right. And for our special needs youngsters who are struggling, how, how are we, um. Taking that in cons, into consideration with the standards-based. Um, we don't want to see a report card that is full of not meeting.
Very good point, Miss Trick Scales, and that's why we don't have not meeting on this report card. We have approaching.
Well, developing, yeah.
Correct. Um, and so, um, we thought that that was very different than having the Fs. Or having the asterisk, right? Which was, uh, again nebulous. Uh, we did meet with special education teachers. We did meet with Ms. Gogarty Fitzgerald and Ms. Rivera. And they felt that this was appropriate, um, because when we rate a student meeting, it's meeting the standards that are in their IEP. Um, and their.
Okay, okay.
So we don't see that the report card would be riddled with developing standards. It would be meeting or approaching for the goal that is set for that student.
Very good. Love to hear that. Thank you, thank you. So again, congratulations, because I know this was huge. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, uh, you know, I, I come at a different perspective and, and while I appreciate the work that was put into this, I am, um, not wholeheartedly behind it. I can, uh, I'll be honest. Um, you know, it's great to hear other school districts are doing this, but, um, I've always said, you know. We're West Orange. We're unique. Um, and sometimes the strongest one is the leader who doesn't follow with the crowd. So just because other school districts are doing it, does not mean that we have to do it or that we should do it. I completely understand and agree from the perspective of your younger students, so your kindergarten, your grade one, grade two, grade three. But when we start getting to grade four and five, I don't think we're giving those students enough credit. Um, and I, I disagree with Terry. I think this is very subjective. Um, you know, if you give a quiz and there's ten questions, you can't dispute that if someone gets seven of those answers correct and three wrong. Seven out of ten is a seventy, right? That, that's just mathematically what it is. That's a fact. Um, you can't dispute that. So I think parents are going to have a really hard time and I'd be curious to know who was on these committees and if there was parent in. Um, it sounds like there was only teachers, um, as stakeholders that were asked. But I'd be curious to know what parents were involved or who was involved. Um, because I do see this as being very subjective. I don't see it as being objective, you know? And in terms of how are we, how are we going to measure accomplishments? So as, if I'm a student. Am I working towards a meeting and expectation or am I working for that A? And, and I'll use myself as an example. I was a very, um. Constant student, very diligent, and I wanted that A every single semester and I worked towards that. Um, to me, this would be, you know, if I'm in fifth grade and I've worked so hard all these years to maintain my, my averages and I'm working towards honors. I'd be really disappointed to now all of a sudden get that I'm just meeting the expectations of my teachers. So I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm trying to understand and wrap my hand around, why do we think this, this system will be easier for parents? Um, especially at the fourth and fifth grade level. I, I can see and understand at the younger levels that we're trying to accomplish and master skillsets. Um, but as we're pa- preparing students for fifth grade and going into sixth grade, um, I really would question. It, it, it almost seems like we're setting up our students for mediocrity versus excellence. And I, I, you know, I have a hard time with that. So. I'm just curious why we feel this isn't very subjective. I, I've always felt and it's no, um. It's not a hidden secret that I think the rubric measurements are subjective. I don't think they're very objective. I've always said that. My son's teachers all through the school have always known that. I've always voiced that. Um, so I'm just curious, you know, why do we think it's objective? Um, and how are we going to measure that it's consistent? Because I would think that if, if I'm measuring my students or I'm looking at them. I don't see how we're going to do that across the board. Again, like I said, you know, an eight out of ten is an eighty. Um, that, that, that's consistent across all levels, right? Um, whereas, you know, if, uh. I, I'm not really sure how we're supposed to measure and be consistent across the, the student population across all schools. If it's meets, approaches or developing. Um, I would also, you know, I do agree with my peers on, you know, I think we should have an exceeding. But again, at the fourth and fifth grade levels, I'm really struggling to see how this would be, um, objective. And, and really prepare our students for that middle school level. So any, if you could just explain how it's not subjective and why we think there's an issue with the traditional method. At the fourth and fifth grade.
I think there's a lot, a lot there. Um, I, I think the first thing I would say is that, um. Over the years, there has been a huge shift in the way we're doing teaching and learning. Um, our current report card hasn't moved along with that shift. Um, and so, and the example that you gave is probably a good one. While maybe at the upper levels, high school, middle school. We may have tests where we are calculating percentages, but that's just not how we assess anymore. At the elementary level, right? It's not the majority of the assessment. So. Uh, while it would hold that an eight out of ten is an eighty, we don't give those types of tests, right? That's just not a common way to assess the way that.
No, we still, we still do. We still do.
Can I weigh in there for a second? I, I, I think, you know, there's, we're, we're kind of peeling back the layers on. A, you know, an extremely complex and dense conversation about assessment. And, and really at its, at its root, would we talk about assessment in, in, um, in, in the educational system? And, and I will tell you that, um, for years, we haven't gotten it right. Well, you know, um, now when, what, what, what it changed was when the standards changed. Now, when I was in high school, the social studies standards were very information-based. Some ways, they probably are still the most information-based, fact-based of the standards are the social studies standards. They have not quite kept pace with some of the other content area standards in that regard. Partially because we have this sort of, this kind of, this, this commitment to information and facts. I don't necessarily disagree with that. But that's neither here nor there. The point is, is that when we were, when we were testing lower level, we were testing remember and understand. Levels of understanding and education. When the multiple choice test was the, was the, was the gold standard. It was really the only standard, to be honest with you, in, in assessments. You know, we had a multiple choice test and so it was very, and, and the standards we were testing. Were very, we could capture proficiency with those, with that, those standards. Because it was like, can you name the three causes of the American Revolution? Now, i- is there still value to being able to say the three causes of the American Revolution? Yes, but the difference is, is that twenty-first century standards are far more focused on application, analysis. And creativity, right? They are far less assessable, if you will, through a discrete item, ten, ten-item quiz. So does that say that there isn't room for the ten-question, you know, ten points per question quiz in modern education? Sure. I mean, there might be some times where a student could demonstrate the knowledge that they need to through a, through a ten-question quiz. But more times than not, the vehicles, the assessment vehicles through which we gain data on mastery of standards. Cannot be assessed with a ten-question quiz. It is, it is, it is a more complex process of assessment through which our students are demonstrating their knowledge and understanding. Um, I would argue that on the secondary level, at the secondary level. Assessment practice is even, is even more outdated and anachronistic. But it, it is, it is enabled to remain that way. Because the settings to, for which we are preparing students and many of the same tests. Which are used for students to qualify for post-secondary education. Continue to be anachronistic in the way they assess students' understanding, mastery of concepts. Although, when you look at the change in AP tests and you look at the change in the SAT. You look at the fact that an increasing number of universities are not even requiring the SAT anymore. Or erring on the side of the ACT because they feel it more accurately captures students' understanding and mastery of the content standards. You see that there is a massive shift within the public education, within the education profession as it relates to assessment. If we have not moved in a like direction on the secondary level, it's because the conventions that govern secondary education. And the conventions that govern that which comes after secondary education, require us to remain stodgy in our approach to assessment. On the high school level, even though fundamentally we know that the tests we are giving are not really measuring student proficiency with the standards. On the elementary level, we are a bit more liberated. Because it really is more about, does this, is the student acquiring the skills? And the knowledge they need. It is imperative that they are, because if they don't, then they, then they cannot even be remotely successful. In the aforementioned stodgy secondary education paradigm. So in elementary, we're able, we're liberated from that. Now. The question becomes, and it's a fair one, and it's one that is subject to debate, which is, are we watering down? Are we, or is it a less, when we take the letter grades out? Is the, is it becoming less rigorous? And is it be, and are students less in, less apt to be engaged and motivated to give their best? Those are actually, those are fantastic questions for a more lengthy debate. I know where I stand on them. Because when engagement in the classroom, true engagement in the classroom, I believe. Is not, is not driven by grades. True engagement in the classroom is driven by, by finding what motivates and drives an individual student. By finding what their passions are, by providing a setting and a context within which for them to explore. And to expand upon and to dis, and to discover what those passions are. That's what's get, that gets, gets kids. Yes, you might have a percentage of students that would learn if you put them in a, if you put them in a box. Yeah, there's a percentage of kids that'll learn, put them in a box. But, but the vast majority of students are not motivated by, by letter grades. They're motivated by. By, by engaging, individualized, authentic experiences in the classroom. That's where we need to be having the conversations, not about a, a letter grade, but are we creating classrooms and instruction that's truly engaging students? At the end of the day, when you look at those standards, and I would ask you to juxtapose those standards in that, in that slide that came before. And look at what was on the report card before. And look at what's on, look at the standards that are on that report card and compare them for complexity. Compare their for rigor. And I, and I, and I would defy anyone to look at those juxtaposed slides and tell me that the slide on the left was more rigorous than the one on the right. But thi- this is, I would be lying, Mrs. Merklinger, if I didn't tell you that this pitched battle over assessment continues to, 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 to be waged. Um, you know, with it, within educational settings. You know, but this is where we've landed and, and obviously we, we, it's, that's the beautiful thing about our country is the, the ability to, to debate and. And, and, uh, and civilly disagree.
No, absolutely. And I, I, you know, I just, I, I, the only point that I would say is it's naive to say that. Um, our, our students are not receiving tests and quizzes because they absolutely are. And, and that, those assessments of what they were learning in the classroom, I mean, my son was just, you know, in, and just had one, you know. Obviously, when he was in eighth grade, but when he was at St. Cloud, he had tests and quizzes. Um, you know. I was at Rutgers, you know, a short time ago and, you know, my professors gave us tests and quizzes to make sure that we were understanding the data and. We had finals. I mean, those are all things that, and, and my finals at Rutgers were absolutely A, B. It wasn't pass or fail. I get that there are other classes like that. But I just, you know, would be hesitant to just jump forward just because other districts are doing this. I'd be more inclined to wait and see. How is it actually working for those, those districts? Um, are, are parents find, I mean, I don't know and I don't think it was answered. Were parents asked about this, um, about this move to, and like I said, I completely understand that grades K through three, um. Uh, uh, understanding that they, you know, measuring and, and, um, understanding the criteria and if they've mastered the skillset. But as you get into the fourth and fifth grade where we've departmentalized, um, I have to wonder if, you know. If, if, if we're really seeing, um, a shift, um, to the way, you know, Ms. Mendez and yourself are speaking. I, I don't know that we have. Um, I'd be curious to see the data points and, and to see what, what the outcome is. And, and what other school districts are experiencing before we just up and move to this, um, this, uh, this grading system. But again, it's, you know, it's not up for our vote. It's, this is what, um, the school district is doing and I understand that. But I would have liked to have seen more parent involvement or engagement, um, before moving to this. Um, and at the same time, I would definitely, you know, um, second that we should have an exceeding because you have to give students something to work towards. I mean, that's, I mean, uh, you know, especially our, our students that are, are higher achieving students who are looking for that extra work. Who are looking to be at the top of the class. I mean, I, I can name you, um, one of the girls in my class from kindergarten. And you knew that she wants to be valedictorian even in kindergarten. Um, and to this day, I think she's very successful. I, I know for a fact she's successful. So. I would just hate to take away from students who do have that love for education and mastering, um, information. Um, even at the younger levels. I don't want to, you know, I don't think we should discount that there are students that do want to achieve great things at the younger levels. And aren't just, um, you know, um, okay with meats. I mean, that's, to me, that meeting and expectation is mediocrity. That's not success. Um, but that's just my opinion. So I look, I do look forward to hearing, um, about the school district. Um, and how, you know, how other districts are handling this. Um, but again, if we could just, were parents in, involved in this decision? I know we keep involving parents in a lot of our other decisions, so it doesn't seem like they were involved in this one. But I could be wrong.
Yeah, well, this year we have just moved forward, uh, with the report card. Um, but in all of the committee work in the prior years, yes, parents were involved in those committees and that dates back to, I think, three or four years at this point. So all of that committee work was reviewed, um, and then we just took that body of work and then solidified it to move this forward.
And if I'm understanding this correctly, they're not getting grades for PE or related arts or anything? Is that they're not getting?
They are, they are. They could not teach her comments on every student, right? So the, the scores will be there. It will be the needs, the approaches or the developing.
Gotcha.
For every content.
Okay.
All right, uh, Ms. Tennycliff.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Um, I'm thrilled to see the standards. Um, this report card, um, to move forward, to be more aligned with the standards. I'm also absolutely thrilled that it's going to be in Spanish and in Creole. Which I think is going to be really wonderful for our families, um, to help them better engage with their students' education. So I think that's a great, um, uh, a great piece. Um. I think, um, you know, the, the workbook sounds great and, you know, as I think. I think, you know, the workbook sounds great and, you know, as I think back on some conversations that I've had with college professors about sort of education and what some of the federal government efforts to, you know, no child left behind and whatnot. And they would say, you know, those kind of programs really destroyed education because it was all about getting the grade. It wasn't about learning. It wasn't about what we're teaching, what we're trying to teach our students now. And the cross pollination of a lot of the things that our students in West Orange High School and in the, excuse me, in the middle schools and then in the elementaries is about, you know, using all of these things together and combining it. So I think this report card is much better assessment of those types of skills and that it does show where we can cross pollinate from, you know, ELA and math and science and social studies and how they're learning skill sets that they're going to take with them. There are rubrics, you know, even at, you know, in the college level that you get and while you may get a grade for it, there is still a rubric on your assignments and your, your course. So you follow those rubrics for that. So I think, you know, I would support certainly doing an exceeds because I do think, you know, many of, you know, my, my son's peers are very focused on their grades and things like that. But I also like the idea that we're not focused on the grades at that level and that there is a time for them to develop and learn these skills without having the pressure of a grade, but they, they know where they stand. And I think the tools show parents really how to help their students and in a very specific way, it shows exactly where the student may be struggling or where they're exceeding. So I definitely think this is, you know, I thank you for all the work. I know it's been years coming and I appreciate all of this. So I do think, you know, it's, it's a good conversation and I'm excited that we're, we're getting closer to where we need to be. Thank you.
All right, um, well, you know, for me personally, you know, I, I think for starters, I think putting the standards on the card is good. I definitely think we need an exceeds expectations in there. I think that's really important. I like how the fact, you know, we've already got a lot of words on the report card that describe, you know, the components in each subject area. And I think it makes actual, it makes good sense to replace those words with the standards. But I'm also really overall with Cheryl on this. I think that you, it, it, it should be possible, and I'm not sure why it's not possible, to assign a letter grade that goes along with the standards, with the meeting and the exceeding and everything else, to sort of, you know, let parents know, you know, where their kids stand and let the kids themselves know where they stand. You know, I agree, you know, not for first grade, second grade, you know, I guess not third, although I think third was where we were previously starting letter grades. But I think it feels to me like there's, there's a paradigm shift when you get to fourth grade and you start to departmentalize that sort of indicates that, you know, we're moving from the, you know, and this is a non educator speaking, but we're moving from, from that more young development of, of skills environment to more the, you know, now it's school sort of thing, you know, which it's a little bit different. I don't know. You know, meeting expectations, I've got to agree. It, it sort of sounds like the modern, you know, politically sensitive version of the gentleman's C. Like it, it, you know, I wouldn't be happy if I just got told I met expectations. But you know, that's me and, you know, I, I think, you know, at the same time, you know, I think I'm, I've, I, when I was a student, I think I was more of an intrinsically motivated kid than extrinsically. But I don't know if a kid who is extrinsically motivated, for whom the grades matters, even at fourth or fifth grade, I, you know, I don't know. What else? Had something else in here that I thought was worth mentioning? Yeah, I guess that's the gist of it, you know, I think that it should be, that, that it should be feasible to, you know, still have a grade letter in here that lets everybody sort of know where they stand. Because I think for a lot of people, you know, parents especially who aren't coming at this from the, you know, from what the current trends in education might be, who, you know, say, all right, so there's standards now and I get it, there's standards, whatever. But at the same, like for them, school, you get a grade at the end of the day, you know, you know, maybe it's, I came out of a time when, you know, we got a percentage back even on writing assignments, you know. I don't know that it's necessarily the case, you know, you get the rubric and, you know, you get six points if you do it this way or whatever, but that's, you, I don't know that that's different than a teacher converting the work on an essay and, you know, taking off for spelling here and structure here and, you know, you kind of miss the point on this section and you get an 89 back on it. I don't know that that's different than getting, you know, a four, a five or a meets expectations or what have you. I'm not really sure how that works. And if, you know, I, I think for me, it's, I think it's one of those disconnects between the education world and the parent world. And it's not to say the education world is wrong, but I think that there still needs to be, it's almost like a crosswalk, like, you know, here's, here's the grade in, in education speak and there's an A, there's a C, there's a B minus for parents to understand the crosswalk to how that translates to real life. But I don't know.
Understood. With regard to the exceeds, we will certainly discuss that tomorrow as a team. They are already working on, on, on adding that to the rubrics and what that would look like. So I will, you know, refer with Dr. Castone and we'll, we'll certainly hear that. Again, it's something that's been in discussion and, and we can shift there quickly. It is a paradigm shift, moving from a traditional numerical calculation of a grade to a standards-based approach. But again, that's the way our instruction is framed. And so then we do feel confident that really positioning students and how they are being assessed against how we're reporting that out to parents does lie well within a standards-based framework.
And I would just want to add one thing. Mr. Alper, as you said something, it just, just triggered a thought, is, you know, there's always going to be some degree of subjectivity in grading because at the end of the day, it's a human being that's doing it. The, the goal is to remove as much subjectivity from that process as possible and having, and, and, you know, when you, there are, like anything else for rubrics, there's rubrics that are complete garbage and there are rubrics that are, that are really well done. And to construct a, a, a really reliable and valid rubric, it's, it's an art and it take, and it takes time to create a really good rubric to try and, and, and take that sort of subjective process that teachers have always used and add some level of, of, of concreteness to it. And then as a team, as, as a faculty, be doing staff development around interrelated reliability, not unlike we do, you know, with, with, you know, should be doing more regularly, but how we do with observations and evaluations of teachers. You know, what is differentiation of instruction? What does it look like in the classroom? What is highly effective differentiation look like from effective? And then having regular conversations between evaluators, between raters, to calibrate our understanding of what that practice looks like in a highly effective means. It's the same thing for grading for teachers. When we look at that standard and we think of like, what, what does that look like when a student is truly demonstrating exceeding expectations for that standard with Mrs., which Mrs. Mendez pulled? Mrs. Mendez, if you'll allow, we're already way over time, but if you allow, go back to that slide in your presentation. Oh, no, Mrs. Gravita has to share or you can do it?
I can do it. Which one?
Go back to the one that had the, the side by side with the standards, the old report card and the, and the new standard, the new social study standards. Right. So when you, so when you look at this, it says, so to analyze how past and present interactions of people, cultures and the environment shape American history. When we look at just that one standard alone and start to think about, what, what would an assessment question, I would argue, would need to be more complex than a question unless it was an extended writing response. But what would the assessment look like that would actually give us information as to whether the, the, the student could actually do that? And then once we had developed the assessment, then what would distinguish a exceeding expectations for that one standard versus a meeting versus developing and what have you? And so when you start to realize that, it's like clearly a single discrete item test could not give that. And, you know, what is that, what is even just trying to understand what that looks like between exceeding and meeting? And so when you start to get down into the weeds of this assessment, you start to realize how ineffectually we've done it in the past. And you can take it off, Mr. Mendez, thank you. And how we really have not had a fidelity in the past as it relates to assessment, to truly designing assessments that measure it and then developing gradated rubrics that establish the different levels of performance for that particular standard. We haven't done it. I'm going to tell you, it's one of the glaring inadequacies of K-12 education, less so on the elementary level than the secondary. And higher ed is worse because there's been no accountability in higher ed to, to, to change practice. The 21st century education movement completely jumped over higher ed. 21st century partnership for 21st century education came from industry and said, the people that are coming to our workforce, they're, they can't do X, Y and Z. Now, they didn't look at higher ed and say, what are y'all doing not, or not doing to prepare your, these folks better for the workforce? They skipped over higher ed and went right to pre-K through 12, which is fine because we own it as well. Okay? And, you know, and, and this was, this was the partnership for 21st century, 21st century, but it skipped higher ed. Higher ed has remained particularly stodgy. Now, Ms. Tunncliff, if you live within the, the higher ed world, you could probably speak to it a bit more. I mean, you're starting to see some shift in practice from an assessment standpoint on the higher ed level, but it's in very slow, it's been much slower in higher ed than it has. And why? Because at the end of the day, we, yes, depending upon the field, some fields are more technical than others and require acquisition of very specific information, right? We, we wouldn't want our, our physicians to be, you know, doing kind of touchy feely kind of shadow box type stuff. You know what I mean? We want them to know and really know this information. But certain professions and certain trainings, we want to be able to, you know, we're, we're training on things like collaboration. We're training things on things like critical thinking, obviously good, strong writing and, and reading and, and oral speaking skills. But that's the problem is, is our, what we've been assessing does not match up with what actually people are going to do when they get into the real world, into the workforce. But anyway, I digress.
I think that's a good point, Dr. Castone, because speaking to that, when we're thinking about percentages, it would require a system where we're doing item analysis for every single question. So if there is a 10 question testers, or if you would, we would have to then segregate each of those 10, put them on item analysis, say which one pertains to this standard, which one pertains to this standard. And we don't score that way when we're doing numerical calculations, right? We do the overall test and here's the 80%. But what does that mean for what the student learned for each one? When we're on rubric, then we're saying, how is that student developing those skills to analyze past and present versus a skills-based assessment, right? And, and then I would just also add that the heart of Gutski's work and, and all of the people who are really gurus around assessment, they are talking about authentic engagement. And authentic engagement really focuses in on the intrinsic motivation and the student really wanting to learn because they desire to learn and they're making connections across content areas versus extrinsic, I'm only learning here because I want an A, right? And we don't want to teach that to our students. We want to teach our students that you're learning because you want to learn because the content is important, because you're making connections to real life, because there is transfer available to you across the content area, not because we're just going to get an A on a report card.
All right. Yeah, I think we want to get on to the next thing, although I would just, you know, as a last thing, point out, you know, when we talk about the subjectivity of grading and different teachers grading different ways, on the one hand, I get it. On the other hand, I feel like the teachers I had in my lifetime who were the tougher graders left much more of an impact and kind of forced me to up my game and become a better, you know, it was mostly writing and be, and become a much stronger writer because I wanted to get that A from somebody who I knew wasn't going to just hand it out. So. I don't know. It's, it's not simple, but I know we've got a lot more to cover.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Mendez. Appreciate it. And thank you to the board for some excellent questions. You know, last but not least, you know, just want to conclude with, you know, providing a, just kind of some, some insights and, and updates as far as, you know, the reopening of schools go. So obviously on, on Friday, I distributed a letter to the parent community. But before I, I'm going to kind of backtrack and then come back to that letter that I sent down on Friday. So, you know, in early November, and, and I think it's really important for me to reiterate this, is that our district physician and representatives from town agencies proactively reached out to me. I didn't solicit their input. I didn't ask for their opinion proactively. They reached out to me unsolicited and, and cautioned me, advised against me, beginning the implementation of the hybrid model at a time when they were witnessing, when we were witnessing, a significant uptick in cases in the town. Now, you know, I had my, I had my own reservations about it from a logistics standpoint, but those things alone were not going to deter us from doing it. Outside of the guidance of, of the, and the, and the caution of those authorities, we were going regardless of my reservations logistically, you know, along the, the lines of the fact that we had seen in terms of closures and quarantines of our schools with no kids in them, okay, with no kids whatsoever and the number of buildings I had shut down. Clearly, opening at a time when we were seeing rise in cases was not something I felt warm and fuzzy about, but we were going. And I was called. I want to make that perfectly clear, okay? And I want to reiterate it time and time again, that I was given guidance and advice to do that. And how could I have not, quite frankly, how could I have not followed the advice? How could I have, in, in the face of advice from my district physician and from local public health authorities have said, no, we're going to do it anyway? I think any reasonable person would know that I could not have possibly said, no, I'm not going to listen to the district physician and no, I'm not going to listen to local public health authorities and open. What was the purpose of that? The purpose of it was to say, let's, let's see where these cases go. Is this a aberration? Is it a flash in the, a flash in the pan uptick that, you know, we're, that, that, that will come right back down? Or is this a part of a more long-term second wave where we're going to continue to see increased cases? And that was, that was pretty much what the doctors, the physicians recommendation was. Let's monitor it and see what the cases do. Now, members of the community were interested, were, were uncomfortable with this being sort of, sort of nebulous. And I understand that. And so they kind of, you know, put pressure on me, quite frankly, to come up with some sort of a metric that we were going to use. When in reality, my metric was going to be a bit more qualitative and asking, you know, regularly checking in with the district physician, with the local authorities, the local health authorities and say, how do you think we are right now? Do you think this, you think we're ready? Do you think this is a time where we can feel comfortable going? We came up with a metric and we, and we came up with a metric which I thought was actually pretty reliable, pretty valid. It was, and which was developed, again, in concert with those same authorities. And it was the daily positivity rate averaged over seven days. Our positivity rate was ranging between 15 and 17%. We put that positivity rate in the context of the COVID-19 risk matrix from the State Department of Health and the Cali index and the benchmark percentages for daily positivity rate that were indicated in that very same COVID-19 risk matrix, which was promulgated by the State Department of Health for local departments of health to advise school districts on what mode of operation they should be in. Okay? And it's specific said. Now, shortly after, you know, we kind of, we kind of made this, this move, it became, became more, more public, this disconnect that existed between what the governor's Department of Health was saying in their very own documents, guidance documents, and what he was saying as a layman in his press conferences. And so sort of shortly after that disconnect became publicly revealed, I'm informed that there's a, that the formula that is used to calculate daily positivity rate is now going to change. They're not using the old one anymore. And not surprisingly, that that new formula is going to lead to, you know, is going to actually lend to a lower positivity rate. You know, conspiracy theorists, you can make of what you will. I'm not making anything of it because the end of the day, I listened to the science then and I'm going to listen to the science now. I'm not going to bemoan the fact that the science doesn't necessarily, is, is inconvenient in some level. I'm going to accept it and we're going to move on it. And so obviously when that, that changed formula and, and obviously what we saw to be lower positivity rates, whereas before Thanksgiving, we were at 16% or so with the old formula and now at 11%, that immediately indicated to me, okay, this means that once we get through this morass of, you know, social intermingling and travel and the beginning of cold flu season, there's a really good chance that come January, we could see positivity rates significantly go down, you know. Now, whether that is a revelation that it's safer, again, out of, out of, that's, that's out of my pay grade. It's out of my area of expertise. I would argue, I, I'm not exactly sure. It seems counterintuitive when cases are going up. But again, I'm going to trust the science. I'm going to listen to the science. Cases are going, positivity rates going down. So immediately, I immediately went to my team and I said, listen, and that's why I said. And that's why I sent the communication out on Friday, to say, "Look, there's a distinct possibility, so we need to get prepared." Okay? But what does that mean? Because I think it's important for the community to know this. I think it's important to recognize that when we plan, it's sort of like the D-Day invasion, but, but probably not, you know, not as, not as, not quite as dangerous as the D-Day invasion. Probably she used a different metaphor. But the, you know, in that, that this is a major operation and it's, and I wish that I could flip a switch today and say, "We're going to be in Monday." But unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. We, we need to set a timeline that's, that's a number of weeks out. Why? Because we know that a percentage of our teachers are going to put in leaves. And they have, as we've approached these transition points and we've geared up, and we were gearing up from number nine, we were gearing up with leaves. And when we postponed, teachers that had previously indicated that they need to put in leave for whether it was childcare or whether it was medical reasons withdrew that leave. And we were happy that they withdrew it because now our regular full-time teachers could remain delivering their instructional responsibilities from home. But that needs to happen again. Now, the actual putting into the leave, that obviously can happen pretty quickly. The leave then is approved by a board. Both those pieces can happen relatively quickly, depending upon the timeline of the board meeting. But the more complex part comes when then we need to post, interview, hire, train, and onboard the people who are going to replace these, however many teachers, could be 20, could be 60, then end up taking leave. And so we have to set that date of when our expectation is that staff members will be coming in a certain number of weeks out to give us the lead time so that our core is, is whole and is there on site. And so that, and if I told you that the timeline, I was prepared to give you a, a date-to-date timeline right now, I would not because this has been a relatively new development. I can tell you, we will be prepared relatively soon. And we will start with staff. We will start with staff. So we'll have sort of a soft opening with staff because, you know, because depending upon what's happening with positivity rates, if they drop, we need to be positioned to be able to flip and go all in. Okay? We can't flip and go all in if we're currently virtual. So we have to first get into a situation where our teachers are delivering instruction from the schools. And from that point, then we can start to, we can start to ramp up. I will tell you that this, you know, the transitions will happen no, no, no earlier than two weeks after the fourth. So the 19th would be the earliest that we would be started, and that's currently our target right now for staff. And then we'll build on that. And we, and right now, again, just looking at it preliminarily, we would do a staggered, a staggered startup, starting with our youngest students and working up to high school students. And that stagger would take place over the course of three weeks. If for some reason, because the positivity rates were still through the roof, we could, we could collapse that stagger where, where, where we went, you know, we went larger numbers of cohorts on each successive date. For example, we could potentially be looking at a full implementation K-12 on the eighth, if for whatever reason in those earlier weeks, we were not able to start bringing them in. But it would all start with the base of having our, 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 our staff corps whole and in and delivering virtually. So that's, you know, what I, I can tell you that it'll be ongoing conversations this week, you know, and we'll be prepared certainly, if not sooner via written communication, certainly by the board meeting on the 21st to provide a, a concrete timeline for the new year, if not sooner via writing the week before. That's where we are.
All right. Board questions, Mr. Rothstein?
Thank you, Dr. Cascon. That actually was very concise and cleared up a number of questions that I had. So thank you for walking us through that. One thing at the end, though, that I'm not sure that I, that I got a hold of, you mentioned a date of December 19th. And I think, were you saying that that would, that's a target date at the moment for having staff begin to?
January 19th.
January 19th, from the, from the buildings themselves. And then after they've started that and we've assessed what our staffing is, we would begin that, that staggered startup with bringing students into the?
Well, the, the, the goal would be, and it's ambitious even within the time we have, would be that, that by the 19th, we had the staff in place that would be prepared to deliver in person to students. Now, we recognize that, you know, some of our positions, some of our positions are harder to fill than others. Right? So, you know, the, the possibility that we could start on site and have an advanced high school-level course teacher, we have not been able to find a replacement. So in the interim, until we were able to do that, that teacher would be teaching virtually from home, beaming in, if you will, to the classroom, and the classroom would be staffed by a substitute. And, and that's, you know, that's, that's a distinct and very real possibility, not only because of inability to locate a qualified leave teacher, but also, you know, if and when we have, we have teachers that are on quarantine, students may be coming in for their one or two days on site and actually be getting the teacher teaching on the smartboard anyway because that teacher's home quarantined. So these are, but I, I think in the end, you know, those are, those are just, I guess, we might call the, the cost of doing business, so to speak. You know, that, that they're going to be these, you know, it's not always going to be perfect, but you know, there's a certain value to actually having done it and doing it. I believe to the collective consciousness, you know, of, of our community and of our, our students, even if it has flaws and it's not perfect.
Got it. Well, thank you. Yeah, I think the best-case scenario, I think, is certainly going to be challenging moving forward until we get back to normal. And I don't know if it'll be normal because when, when we are back to normal in the classroom five days a week, I'm going to look at schools completely differently. I know I think I'm going to have, be expressing a lot of appreciation for our teachers and our faculties. But thank you very much for walking us through that.
All right. Ms. Guskows?
Yes, and thank you, Dr. Cascon, for some additional details. And I'm encouraged. I'm excited. I, I think we need to try this. I imagine that we're looking at the possible travel for families and possibly staff returning after the holidays and then pushing out the 14 days or whether it's 10 now, I don't know if they've changed the quarantine for bringing people back. Is that the rationale for that time in January?
Yeah, you know, I think it's a question. I mean, I think it's a, it's a combination of things. I think, you know, the, the reality of it is, is that presently, you know, our township still resides in that high level of risk. And it might continue to, you know, through the remainder of December. So I think it's partially that, that we're still not quite where we need or want to be from a local positivity rate. But I think it also is what you're talking about, which is that it, it, it makes sense, you know, to allow the intermingling and the travel that, which occurs over, over the holidays to kind of play itself out from a quarantining standpoint. And on top of that, you know, we know that, we know that we need, we need time. So in some ways, we're almost building our timeline out based upon, based upon, you know, the fact that, that by the 19th, the positivity rate is going to be where we need it to be, and we're going to be able to come in. And so now we're just plotting it. We're, it's really, it's, it's a theoretical timeline, but it's a timeline we sort of have to lay down because at certain point in time, we have to start preparing to have our, our, our staff corps in. You know, and that can happen. And I've never throughout this, from the beginning or throughout this, have ever felt on any level that, that if we have the proper protocol in place, notwithstanding, you know, that there might be cases in the community, unless we were shut down wholesale by the governor, that it was not safe, provided we were exercising and complying with the proper protocols in our buildings, that it's not safe for a staff member to come in and teach individually from their classroom, unless, of course, it's deemed not so medically. So, you know, and we've seen some other school districts do this, is they, they've kind of started with that soft opening, which is just starting with staff. It gets people comfortable coming in and it enables a district then to be able to up to down, you know, upshift into that higher gear of hybrid that their staff in. Until we get people in, we can't upshift. So we have to have that as our primary, as our, as our first step.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You know, you know, you asked me for a quarter, I gave you a dollar, TTS. You know how, you know how I do it.
Ms. Merklinger?
So definitely excited to hear this. Obviously, I've been, you know, one of the folks that's been very aggressive about getting our students back on site and getting our teachers back into the schools because, you know, the science all supports that we, our students need to be in the classroom. They need to be having that engagement and there is no replacement for brick and mortar. So the question I guess I have is, you know, because a lot of our, our surrounding districts, and, and you know, I am the biggest proponent of, we are unique, but since everyone keeps referencing other districts, other districts, everyone's here, they're going back, they're doing this, they're doing that. I have to wonder, you know, and it, it didn't get answered, but Dr. Kelly didn't advise any other districts not to return on site. And so, you know, I, I do wonder why that was. And, and obviously, he's not here to answer that. And so it's more of a rhetorical question. But with that being said, and, and knowing that we were ready to go for November 9th, have we thought about starting those surveys again of parents that want to opt, you know, opt out versus going back on, knowing that we're planning to go back in January? And to the point about, you know, staff and teachers and having to possibly train and hire and onboard, what, why have we not started doing that now? Like, or could we start doing that now, I guess, is a better question in preparation so that we're not waiting till January to start that? So if we were to say, "We're looking to start back on site, all things considered, January 19th", could we start those surveys and questions now?
Yeah. So, some good, good points. And, and, you know, and, and, you know, I think the question about Dr. Kelly, you know, and I don't think it's rhetorical. I think, I think it, it, it merits some, some response. So, you know, I, I think when, first of all, when we talk about like, how can some district students, how some can't, you know, it, you know, it's interesting to me that, you know, we, we only look at the, we only look at the districts that are in, right? And a lot of times when we look at the districts are in, we, we look at them as apples-to-apples comparisons. You know, when, when in reality, they're not. And, and they're not apples-to-apples for any number of reasons. It could be size, it could be the, the, the current state of their, of their facilities, you know, any number of factors. And, you know, and so, you know, you look at, you look at Montclair, you look at South Orange, you look at East Orange, you look at Orange, you look at Belleville, you look at Nutley, although Nutley was in hybrid, now they're, they're virtual without the holidays. We don't look at any of those. We, we sort of just, we just kind of gloss over the ones that, and some that are even of similar size to us that are closed. And we say, "Well, you know, why is Verona open and why is Glen Ridge open?" In fact, I was on the, I was actually on the, on a call with the, with the superintendents of both those districts recently. And, you know, and, and, you know, Glen Ridge said, "Yeah." He goes, you know, "Hey, listen," he goes, "If I had 100-year-old buildings and we hadn't done a referendum four years ago for HVAC, you know, we'd be in, we'd be in the same exact boat." So there are a lot of reasons and differences why some districts are in or some aren't. Now, as far as why Dr. Kelly made that, that consultation when he did, you know, the way I've looked at that is, is that no other district that he consults was in the position we were in, which was that we had postponed the implementation of our hybrid to November 9th and contemporaneously with our planned implementation of hybrid, we had spike in cases. I would imagine, though I haven't done an exhaustive analysis of all the districts that he consults, that none of the other districts that he consults with or he serves as a district physician were in that, that similar position, that same position of about to start on November 9th, which was only by, by happenstance because that was when we had set relative to the work we were doing up to that point. And then contemporaneously, in West Orange, we saw a rise in cases. And so that was what led him to do that. Again, I would imagine that if another township was encountering the same circumstances, he would have given the same counsel. But that's the only thing.
Yeah, I think the other districts that he consults for, actually, a majority are in person. So I think that's where my, my question's coming from. Why, why was the, why would he not give the advice to say, "You should really, we're seeing us, we're going to start seeing the second wave. You should probably think about going back to the hybrid or back to the virtual model." And I think that's, that's more where my question was.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think, Ms. Merklinger, I think the answer is, is if you were, like, if you were already in, I'm going to be honest with you, like, if we were already in, first of all, we would have already been, we would have already been managing the inevitable closures that would have happened. But I think the point was, is that to, to begin and, and recognizing that there was going to be a certain degree of kind of loss of momentum that happened anyway when we were shifting between the, an all virtual to hybrid model. And then on top of that, doing it, doing it at a time when we could, when we could, we could predict and expect that we were going to have a significant number of closures, which we've seen because a lot of these districts that have been hybrid, you know, actually have closed through the new year or have shut down for a couple of weeks at a time. Like, some of these districts, like Livingston and Glen Ridge and Verona, all closed down the past week. And so, you know, we, we would have, but they were, they were already open for a spell of time. So for them to close after they'd been open, but for us to begin and then the day or two or the week we start to now be like, "I don't know, you know, this is, this is unmanageable." I can only imagine that those are the, the reasons why they didn't recommend, why we did recommend not doing it. So, but I understand the question. Oh, and I'm sorry, relative to the survey and why we can't. So, this is all, this is all very fresh. I think, you know, we need to, you know, I, I think that, you know, while I, I kind of alluded to this generally in my correspondence to teachers on Friday, which went out before the community, admittedly, I've probably provided a greater degree of specificity relative to the plans tonight. And so it's going to require some, you know, and I've done so because, and it's always a balance. And I, I tell, you know, I tell teachers this sometimes. It's like, "Well, why didn't we know first?" It's like, "Listen, you know, I, I, I represent, I represent everybody. I, I represent the interests of the community and I also represent the interest of the employees." And sometimes it's important for, it's essential for the staff to know first. And, and, and sometimes it's just, it's important for, for, for a message to be delivered to parents. And I feel that tonight at this meeting on an update on school opening, it was important and imperative for parents to hear this message and to hear some degree of specificity. So we'll go back, we'll, we'll articulate this clearly to our staff. And then, you know, my poor executive director personnel will start the process over again and we'll get the ball moving on that. And anyone who feels that they're not able to come in due to medical reasons will let us know and we'll get the ball rolling. You know, I, I don't, I mean, as far as the surveys to parents, yeah, I guess, I guess the idea is that, you know, that, that some parents might change from virtual to, to, to hybrid, knowing that we're going in? Yeah. I, I think, I think really what I would see, probably a more effective way to do it would be, you know, that if we have any families who had previously opted for virtual and they're interested in going back to hybrid, I think probably, maybe Mrs. Demendez, you can weigh in on this. I think, you know, the easiest thing might just be for them to reach out to the building principal or the guidance counselor on the secondary level if they were interested in changing what they had originally been. And so we can put out some correspondence to parents on that if they want to make a change in either direction to, to reach out to guidance counselors or principals.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Tonigliff?
All I'm going to say is thank you for the update. I think all my other questions have been answered.
All right. Same here. Anything else before we move on? No? All right. Questions from the public on agenda items only. You'll have three minutes. Give us your name, give us your home address, and you know the drill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Alper. Anyone who does have any questions, it will be the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And you can push the button. Now you don't have to wait for anyone to finish talking. I don't have anyone raising their hand and I don't know if that's right or not. That, I don't think that can be possible, is it? Do we not have any public comment at this time? There we go. Okay. I didn't want to jinx it, but it seemed a little strange. Melinda Huerta, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello. Good evening, everybody.
Bye.
That was a very long beginning part of the meeting. I actually kind of zoned out a little bit. I was, my brother came and distracted me and made me forget all of my questions. But I just wanted to say, thank you for taking the time to do this meeting. I know that there's just been so much on everybody's plate. It just feels like these moments in these times are just moving fast and slow at the same time. And there's just so much to do. And a lot of energy goes into all of the work that everybody's doing. I did have a couple of questions. I noticed quite a significant difference in appropriations between the school-sponsored co-curricular activities versus the school-sponsored athletics. And I know that that's been a concern for a lot of parents in terms of, in terms of events and activities that are available for our students who are not athletically inclined. Another thing I noticed on the agenda was for the curriculum and instruction, Agenda Item B. There is an implementation of virtual homework academy versus virtual after-school community going to be implemented in December, it looks like. And I just wanted to see or to know what the difference is between a homework academy and an after-school community, and why some schools are doing one versus the other. And if we can get a little more details on the implementation of that, and how is that different from office hours? And one thing also from the beginning of the counselors questioning, when Mr. Rothstein actually asked, he had a concern about reaching students who are falling through the cracks. What happens when all of the protocols fail, not at the fault of the administration or the parents' efforts, but at maybe the resistance or the disconnect of the student? I know that there were a few programs and things that were available through the guidance counselors. But is there a, is there resources that are available either through the website or things available publicly for the families to reach out to? Just because I know societally there is a stigma around mental health and mental health issues. And sometimes it is harder for parents to maybe come out to a teacher or somebody that they feel close to and not want to either have, be stigmatized by, you know, or looked on a certain way. I just thought that maybe those resources could be made available either through the website or in any other capacity. Anyway, thank you. Have a good night, everybody. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Adam Kramer. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi. I come to you as a parent with a very different perspective. I have
Adam, I'm sorry, before you begin, can we just have your name and address for the record, please?
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Ranch Road, West Orange, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I come to you as a parent with a very different perspective. I have three kids that are in Jewish day schools that have been open since August 30, August 30. They've been going on a bus to very old buildings, entering them with hundreds of other students, dozens of faculty, and have done so safely. I see a huge disconnect here between what I see. I hear Dr. Fauci telling us that schools are absolutely safe. And I, as a taxpayer, I'm paying to have ineffectual virtual learning. And I, as a citizen, are seeing 6,800 students learn at home instead of at school, which we know is less effective. I see a large delay in learning because of this. And I see this disconnect. And I'm sorry, I can hear all the excuses. I can't get over this disconnect. I have lost trust in this board. I have lost trust in the leadership of the school, because you can't open it. If you can't open it, start issuing checks and letting parents pay for pods, or, or or in-place learning, and just get over yourselves. You gotta open the schools. You can't do this. You're harming the community. Get over yourselves, open the schools, and do what's right. Keeping these schools closed like you're doing is just so wrong on so many levels. And I can't get over this disconnect. And I no longer trust you to do your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this time is a final call. If there would like, anyone else would like to speak on agenda items, use the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. Okay, Sarah, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Sarah Dering. It's 47 Oak Ridge Road. And I almost gave up and went to sleep because this was so long. So unbelievably long. And I really wish there was a way to get public comment done earlier, because, you know, we all have to work tomorrow. I'm sure you guys do too. So I'm completely exhausted. But I just wanted to express so much disappointment about the report cards. Myself and some other fourth grade parents were really thrown by it. We were not expecting the change. It's such a disappointing change for me because my child is one of those kids that is motivated by As. And so are a lot of her friends. And I know that, like, I know that it's parents, we want to motivate them by hard work. But you know what? Meeting standards, what is that? Is a seven out of 10, is that meeting standards? I mean, is, is, is a six out of 10 meeting standards? What is it even gonna mean? To me, it sounds more nebulous than an A or a B or a C or a D. And I just have to say that she has been looking forward to getting acknowledgement for straight As, since she watched her brother get acknowledgement for straight As. And she has never ever been acknowledged for academics. Because they canceled on her roll for elementary, so she didn't get to go up on stage and get recognized. And she watched her brother get an award that she wanted to get herself. And that was something she was striving for. And that, she's never gonna get it, right? She's just gonna get straight M's or straight P's or other, some other such nonsense like that. And I have to say that the comments on the report cards are, they're not actually that helpful for parents. And, and I am a parent who is really actively engaged with education. And, and this is an area that I work in. So I do educational advocacy with my work. So I am familiar with the curriculum and I'm familiar with the standards. But I, I don't find the comments on their report card to be that helpful to me personally about what we can do at home to continue to challenge my child. And I'm sure that I'm not alone amongst other parents regarding that. So I just wanted to express my disappointment. I know there's nothing I can do. So.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Lawrence McAbey, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Lawrence McAbey, Two Mountain Way. I, I'd just like in a calm, measured voice to thank the board and the administration for the steps they've taken, taking into account the safety of the children, the science, not attacking doctors, not attacking scientists, and acting responsibly, and, and most importantly, calmly, while we deal with a, you know, once in a generation pandemic. All I want to say, I'll give you back your two minutes and 30 seconds so we can all go to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that is it for the public comment section.
All right, closing that out. Dr. Cascon, anything on the after-school versus homework, that sort of thing? Or anything else?
Oh, Dr. Cascon, it's that time.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Gruppius. Relative to the equity in clubs, all of the, I think there's, I think there's two parts to that. You know, all of the elementary schools, as an example, all receive, you know, budgetarily, the same allocation for extracurricular clubs. Each elementary school has a little, has, has flexibility to implement clubs that might be of greater interest to their student population. So it's not cookie cutter in terms of which clubs are offered at each elementary school, but there is the same allocation in each of those schools. You know, I think in terms of the other point about, you know, kind of athletics versus, versus extracurriculars. I mean, the only school this year where any athletics, formal athletics are offered is at the high school. You know, and we do have a, quite a number of, of extracurricular clubs running and operating virtually. In some cases, we do have activities that are happening on site, although that has been less within the last number of weeks. I think we've been slightly more reticent to do that. But there certainly is equity between elementary schools. And, and typically, there's a good distribution, a good variety of clubs and activities that are both athletic and extracurricular. So, as far as the after-school programs, yeah, the, the good questions. You know, the, the difference between like the homework academy and the virtual after-school community is the, the homework academy is really more of what you would imagine to be sort of kind of an orthodox, you know, kind of, you know, intervention or remediation program that, you know, really with academics as it's pure focus, a club like that already exists at Washington School. And all these programs are funded through grants, are funded through our ESSA grants, formerly known as NCLB grants. And the, the virtual after-school community, and a good question about how it differs from office hours. And, and, you know, the reality of it is, is it's, it's meant to be more of an open environment, you know, there, there may be homework support, but there also may be social interaction, there's game playing and things of that nature. So it's an additional opportunity to bring kids together for social interaction as well as academic support if necessary. And you know, I, you know, I do want to thank Mr. McAbey for his comments. And, and, you know, and I, I think, you know, you know, Mr. Kramer's passion there. And, and, you know, listen, we're, you know, we're living through a time with, there's a lot of emotion, you know, and, and, and feelings and emotions are strong on many levels, you know, for many different reasons. And, and I, believe me, I, the, you know, I know that it is, it is difficult. I know that it is that there's, there's an apparent disconnect. But all I can say is, you know, that, and then I think I've been very clear and, you know, articulating the rationale for why we are where we are now. And, and in the end, you know, ultimately, I, this board, you know, we are responsible for the safety and well-being of our staff, of our students. And we have to try and use science the best we can and the recommendations we've been given. I would encourage anyone who has not, has not read my communications to the community and the rationale that I've used, to please just read them and recognize that this is, it's not below board, it's not dishonest. And we tried to approach the process with the greatest degree of integrity and following the science to the greatest degree possible. So, you know, appreciate the feedback and it obviously just continues to drive us to, to get to our ultimate endgame. So thank you. Mr. Alper.
Thank you. And, yeah, thank you, everybody, for the comments. And Sarah, thank you for your daughter's perspective, which I think is, you know, it's always good to hear that and see what's going on from the children's perspective as well. All right, closing that out and moving on to the next thing. Who wants to move some policies? We have some policies up for second reading tonight. May I have a motion for those?
All motion.
All right, any discussion on those? Seeing none, Mr. Calabano, let's vote.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next up, personnel items one through four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I'll note Francis Newman from the high school retiring from science after 32 and a half years. So congratulations, best wishes. Seeing none other, Mr. Calabano.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Sorry, yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Next, CNI items one through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
All right, any discussion on that?
No discussion. But I just want to say that, just point and highlight the council, or thank the Eastern Atlantic Sales Regional Council of Carpenter Funds, offering the apprenticeship for programs to the high school graduates. And I think that's just another great step for our students who, you know, I still think working with your hands is, is a lost, a lost, what's it called? A lost talent, I'll say. So I think that's great that we're bringing that into the high school and continuing that.
Absolutely. All right.
Same issue. Is there a, is there a monetary figure with that at all? Or is it just the approval for the curriculum? And for the apprenticeship itself?
The latter, Ms. Tony Cliff.
Okay, thank you. And one more question on CNI for number four. Is there a breakdown of what's going, is that 58,000 divided evenly between all the schools? On the, for the grant?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
And I also had just two quick questions, one of them being with regards to the after-school program grants. Are those, are the programs themselves available to all of the students at those schools?
They are available to, if they are funded out of Title I, which they believe they are, then they are any, any student that's eligible under Title I would be eligible through that program. And so that's not only economically disadvantaged, that's also any students who are identified as, of being at risk academically.
And, and for the other program, which is Title IV-A for the community, the after-school community, is that treated the same way? Or, or is that open to all students?
Under IV-A would be open to all students.
Okay, great. And then the only other question that I had was with regards to the culinary classes, the bake shop. Do they need tasters? You can get back to me later about that, though.
You work for free, or?
As always.
Okay, if it's budget neutral, there might be, there might be an option there.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Next, special services, items one and two, and business office items one through seven. May I have a motion?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'll point out some thanks for some donations. Element Fitness, the Rotary Club, and Richard Trank. Thank you all very much for your generous donations to the district.
I did have one question. I'm hoping, Mr. Calabano, maybe you can just explain a little bit for our community, the transportation agreement. I, I think folks are going to be a little concerned seeing as we're not in school right now, what this pertains to, if we could just explain it a little bit more in depth.
This is actually for a special ed student and it's transportation from his residential setting in East Windsor to go to his school in Burlington, Burlington County Special Services School District.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. And last miscellaneous item one, may I have a motion?
All motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? IQ SAC? All right, Mr. Calabano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, petitions and hearings of citizens, public comment on any topic at all. Once again, you'll have three minutes. Give us your name, give us your address, raise your hand.
Hey, thank you. Once again, if it's, if you'd like to speak on any topic, it is to raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. And we don't have any callers in. Melinda Huerta, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, Melinda Huerta, 17 Park Drive South, West Orange. I did want to make a comment about the last meeting, the last Board of Ed meeting, there were discussions about the budget and having a budget, a town hall budget soon. I'm not sure if that was still the plan, or I know there's much talk about, or a lot of things going on in preparation for the new opening and other things. And I believe that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the last call for anyone who would like to speak. It's to raise your hand button on the bottom of your screen. And we have no other people raising their hand.
Excellent. Closing that section out, we will be having a budget town hall on December 15th, scheduled for 7:00 PM start. There'll be further communication on that in the near future. Board member reports, please keep them short. Mr. Rothstein?
I'm gonna keep this very short. Nothing to report. Thank you.
It is Trig Scales.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. I was just going to give a quick update from the negotiations committee. You and myself. So right now, we're in active negotiations with Local 68. And that consists of our head custodians, custodial supervisors, custodians, full and part-time bus drivers, and maintenance personnel. And we're in the process with the West Orange Administrators Association, and beginning with the West Orange Education Association. And that's it for me.
Thank you kindly. Ms. Merklinger?
I will keep this really short. I just want to thank our Air Force Junior ROTC for the cadets that participated in the annual Christmas tree lighting. It was really fun and exciting for a lot of our members of our community that were looking for some sort of normalcy. And they did a great job. And they dressed up, and they were dancing, they handed out with like a fishing rod type of thing to cars they drove by. So I just want to recognize the ROTC program and thank them for that. If you haven't already chatted out, I encourage you to go on to Instagram or Facebook and check out Gregory School's holiday video. It was very creative. It's very fun. So I thank the Gregory School community for teachers and staff for putting that together. It was really fun to watch. I want to recognize Mrs. Maria David from Liberty Middle School. She was named the November 2020 New Jersey Devils Future Goals STEM Teacher of the Month. So congratulations to Mrs. David. That's an awesome acknowledgement. So congratulations on that. And I know that with the holiday season, a lot of folks have been asking about coat drives and some of the activities that we've previously done within the community have been put kind of on hold because of the pandemic. But the Shiloh Club is accepting coat donations for anyone who's interested, and those are being sorted and delivered to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry. They're accepting them during normal business hours through December 31st. So if you do have coats that you like, that are gently worn or new that you'd like to donate, I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Fantastic. Ms. Tunncliff?
No report tonight. Thank you.
And good to, so that's a full lid. Our next meeting, as previously mentioned, will be a town hall to discuss the budget on December 15th at 7:00 PM. Our next regular meeting of the board is 7:30 PM on December 21st. Have a good night, everyone. Get homes if we're adjourned.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on and off screen, and no other business will be conducted. Thank you and have a great night.